Twenty-six, two thousand twenty-fi— oh, sorry about that. Council, it is Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, six oh one P. M. I'm calling this meeting of the regular city— this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. We do—I've got to count carefully because we barely have a forum. We have four members present, so hopefully nobody's abstaining on any votes or someone joins us. So, moving along, any adjustments to the agenda?
I—I have one, Mr. Mayor, is to add an item four H to the consent agenda. This was described in the packet memo. It would be to approve a letter of support related to the Good Sam Street Outreach Team Program, and the draft letter was included in the packet as well.
And we'll be ratifying that next week, so you'll see that on the consent agenda again next week. Anything else, Council or Manager? If we have time—I don't anticipate this is going to be a terribly lengthy meeting. If we could—and if you have—if you're inclined, I'd like to just have a little conversation at the end of the meeting about some of the activity, some of the criminal activity that's going on in the city and—and how we can help. It—it's been—for me, it's been a pretty frustrating week, I got to tell you. And so, i—if we have time, just a—a conversation and some brainstorming about how maybe we improve things. Okay, so, moving right along, under Visitors and Communications, anyone wishing to address the Council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Vern?
Hi, thank you. Thank you all for being there. I just wanted to acknowledge the sidewalk that is going in on the lower part of Allen Street on a curve that I hope will make it a much safer place for pedestrians. It also—the way it's engineered, it avoids having to have a crosswalk at the bottom of the street. I think it'll take drivers a while to become acquainted with it because it is something new, and, of course, still has to be—all the paving around it needs to happen later in September, but I just wanted to say thank you. And just also address that—I don't know, I've probably been talking about the need for a sidewalk for the people that live here for ten or twelve years, and it felt like a long time to address such a serious need. I hope that going forward, when people in our community who might not be on a committee come to council with concerns of ways that we can see small things that help our community to be a safer and healthier place to—to live. So, I—I just heard your comment about the crime, and I don't know what you're referring to tonight, but it's like all of us working on making sure that the people that are—are here have housing and they have places to shower and go to the bathroom and that kind of stuff. So, I'll—I'll be listening to hear what you have been dealing with and some thoughts that you might have on helping to find what people need to be successful in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vern. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, Alexandra Paschke.
Oh, would you—would you mind—
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, otherwise the mic doesn't pick you up. Thank you. And if you could just state your name for the record, I know you, but—
Of course, Alexandra Paschke. Thank you for having me here tonight. I can go?
Oh, of course.
Oh, yeah, okay, great. I'm actually here tonight because the United States Postal Service, our local chapter, has sent out a letter to some of the residents—I don't think it's to all the residents in Berry City—on a conversion of mailboxes, so converting from a home, like, a mailbox attached to the home, to one that's on roadside. So, it doesn't seem very coordinated, and some of us have sort of been in shock about, you know, having to make the conversion and trying to come up with some ideas, especially on—I live on a very steep, narrow street, and it has some complications. So, in the meantime, I wrote to you, City Manager, of course. I also wrote to Brian Baker, Director of Public Works, and just asked if there could be a coordinated effort with USPS. That would be really great. But again, if there's ten of us that have gotten this letter, I don't expect the city to move mountains, but if there's a number of us that have, it would be great if the city could get involved, because in my area, there is a large right-of-way for the city, and I have concerns about digging into the right-of-way. Am I going to place it correctly? Anyway, all of that—I could go on and on, but I spoke with Brian. He said he's going to send his foreman up Friday and help talk to people on my street to kind of get an idea of where to put these new mailboxes, whether we want to put in—I think they call it—is it a CBU, Cluster Box Unit? Which could work for some of us, but maybe not all of us. Again, we're on a steep street, navigating that up and down. We have a lot of retired folks on our street, so I don't know. Anyway, I'm just trying to think of it all. We understand the post office has its needs. They're—they have a lot of challenges. I mean, I wondered why. When I met the postmaster, I was like, "Oh, you look so familiar." It's because she works Sundays delivering mail. That's why I know her. So, I know they're working really hard and they have their challenges. We want to meet that, but also, we need some help and guidance. So, that's what I say.
Well, thank you. I got one.
I got one.
Oh, you got one? Okay, I thought you had a question.
No, I got—I got a letter, yeah.
Yeah, and yeah, and thank you for bringing that. Actually, I—I was going to follow up with the postmaster here in Berry, because, you know, for a lot of quo—we had—I mean, honestly, Karen and I had a lot of questions. I mean, we—I get mail related to the mayoral duties, and sometimes I'm concerned about the security of the mail. So, can we get a lock in—you know, so I—I had a lot of questions myself. I mean, I want to work with the postal service. I, like you, I know they have their challenges, and—and I love our postman. I hate the thought that I won't be able to say hi to him as he comes to the house and delivers my mail, but yeah. But yeah, well, you'll—you'll see a coordinated effort. I'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else under Visitors and Communications? Yes, Raylene?
I—yes, I'm not sure if you all heard, some may have heard, that we are doing an overdose awareness vigil on Sunday, the thirty-first, in the City Hall Park. It starts at five-thirty and will go until eight. We will be lighting candles in memory of those lost to overdose. So far, the list is a hundred and twenty-eight names that we will be reading. There will be participation by participants of the local treatment court, as well as Turning Point Center. Chief Vale is going to do the opening statement remarks, and I—I believe Joe Aldsworth will be there as well to help us out with this event. And just to put it in context, some of the people that we will be memorializing on Sunday, this is literally like their funeral. It's what their—their family does to memorialize them, because there weren't funds to do anything different. And so, it's—it's very meaningful, and it's very powerful for a lot of people, and I hope that all—or at least some of you will attend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, that's—I'm sorry, Sunday, the thirty-first, from five-thirty to eight, City Hall Park.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name是我的朋友Sienna. We put in application to pop up a vendor in Berry City. We are Resmi Energy. We were at the Berry Heritage Festival. We did a thing with Harry and Lloyd's, got an agreement to, like, open up there, so we put in application to the city for a, like, a—it's a food trailer slash—well, just drinks.
Yeah, drink trailer.
We wanted to come here and introduce ourselves, so you could at least put a face to the application and be a part of the process.
Well, thank you. That's awesome. So, that'll be coming up. We'll be taking that up under Liquor and Cannabis Control Board, so it shouldn't be too long if you want to—
It should be just under—
Oh, it'll be under consent?
There's not—that's not—
They're not liquor.
Oh, okay. So, it'll just be a consent agenda item?
Just caffeine.
So, we'll have you in and out of here in two seconds. But thank you so much for—it wasn't necessary for you to come in, but thank you for coming in and introducing yourself. I appreciate you. Okay, anyone else under Visitors and Communications? Okay, then Council will move on to the consent agenda. We'll be approving the minutes of eight-five-twenty-five. Under Office Clerk's Office Licenses and Permits, we have—
Resmi Energy L.L.C. It's—it's a drink vendor. They have asked to have an area behind Harry and Lloyd's on Granite Street. I guess it's their—their business parking spaces that they'll be occupying. They serve caffeine, caffeinated drinks, and it has been visited by Nick Kopping. It has been approved by Nick Kopping as well, our—our Fire Marshal and the Health and Safety Officer, and they also have purchased their products.
And you actually sent me an email a while ago, didn't you?
I might have. I think we're trying to put up by John Hardware Store. I think I did, yeah.
Yeah, seven-nine-three-one-zero-three-three. Give me a call. I'd love to help support you.
Okay.
So, seven-nine-three-one-zero-three-three. Everybody has it.
You have it?
You got it. He memorized—I can tell, he memorized it as soon as I said it. Okay, and Council will be approving November fifth as an alternate meeting for City Council. We'll be approving an—an additional twenty-thousand-dollar opioid settlement allocation to Turning Point. That's in addition to the forty-thousand dollars that we allocated previously. I think you had a memo on that. And in addition, we'll be—we'll be enacting Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash sixteen that sets the fiscal year twenty-six water and sewer rates. You had a memo on that in your packet. We'll be ratifying the USW contract in addition to an in-person briefing by the manager—that was, what, two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. You also had a briefing in your packet on that. We'll be authorizing the manager to execute contracts. I believe you have one—
On contract, yeah.
And that is with—
That is to do the public safety building drainage improvements and drainage and access improvements. That's with RJ Piché—I'm not sure how to pronounce it—excavating forty-five-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-four. This was competitively bid, and it is FEMA-funded.
And then, lastly, with the—the addition of item H, we'll be sending a letter of support for—the for the Street Outreach Program. So, is a motion would be in order, Council?
So moved.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done? Oh, go ahead.
I have a question about the water and sewer rates, and maybe we can just agree to put it on upcoming business, because we had talked about the—having different rates for Berry Town versus Berry—versus Berry City.
Yep.
But this is just a consent agenda, and so, like, could we just put that on an agenda?
Yes, absolutely. That will be on a future agenda. It's a—that is a much longer conversation.
Yes, no, no, I relate.
This just—is—we're just setting the rates for this particular year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions, Council? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Okay, Council will be approving under four A. We'll be approving the city warrants. We'll be approving the week of eight-twenty-seven-twenty-five, and we'll be ratifying the week of eight-thirteen and eight-twenty-twenty-five. Motion would be in order. Do you want those separately, Counselor? Do you need those separately?
I mean, yes, ideally, if we could. The one that is—the sorry, it looks like the twelfth—the thirteenth? The thirteenth, I think I can approve.
Thirteenth, you're conflicted out on?
No, the other two I'm conflicted out on, and this one, I believe, I can vote on.
Okay, so I'll accept that as a motion to approve eight-thirteen-twenty-five. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. And Council will accept a motion to approve the week of eight-twenty-seven-twenty-five and eight-twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those—any questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, your abstention is noted. No, we did have four votes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. City Clerk, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good.
First of all, I'd like to announce that we have closed the first quarter for property taxes on Friday, August twenty-second. The delinquency rate was five-point-nine-nine in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-four-hundred-sixty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. However, you are still obligated to make those payments without additional penalties and interest if you make that payment by September fifteenth. Secondly, the BSA met on August eighteenth for the purpose of conducting a biennial voter checklist, challenge, and purge. However, with the upcoming Central Vermont Career Center Bond election scheduled for November fourth, when that came to light, it will be delaying that action, because you cannot purge or challenge ninety days before an election.
Gotcha.
So, we will hold that immediately after the November election and before the March elections come up. So, there's a window where we can get that done. Upcoming business, annual renewal of permisses—permits and licensing will begin in September with the due date of December thirtieth. These are entertainment licensing. These are the garbage disposal licensing. Vendors—vehicles for hire will be sending out those renewal applications and expect them back by December thirtieth. And looking forward again, local organizational funding applications will be going out at the beginning of September. We're going to be keeping the due date of January second, just to be consistent, even though our annual meeting is in May. It just keeps everything consistent, year after year. That due date will continue to be January second, the complete applications. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? So, do you think—are you seeing an uptick in folks who are delinquent, folks who—
Yes.
—are sending their checks, but they're—they're not arriving or—
That's happening more often.
So, just give me your—give me your thoughts a little bit on that.
My thoughts on that? It's better to walk the payment in, or if you do rely on the post office, how—you know, the post office being just across the street, I still encourage you to walk it in. But if you go to a post office, get it date stamped right there by the clerk manning the window. Any date stamp of the due date or earlier, it will be accepted, even if it's two weeks beyond the date. Just make sure that date stamp reflects the due date or before. We have a few—the envelopes don't have a stamp at all, and they swear they were at the post office on the due date mailing that out. There are some checks that just don't arrive at all.
Ever.
Ever, ever. We have yet to see a few. And there are just some that they just can't afford to pay at this time.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, there is an uptick in delinquencies.
But I'm—I'm thinking more about—and not picking on the postal service, but, you know, it—it's pretty obvious that they're a little challenged, you know, at times.
Absolutely.
And it's weird, because it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. I'm someone who actually writes checks, puts the stamps on—on them, and, you know, we have a few auto transfers, not that many, not like most folks do nowadays, but it's sort of this weird self-fulfilling prophecy, because more and more, I'm thinking about going paperless and just sending every—but if I do that, I'm not supporting the post office. So, I'm making the problem worse, because now I'm reducing the revenue. So, it's just something that I think about. Do you think we should—so, if someone—you don't get someone's check, they get thirty days to pay it at a reduced penalty amount or—well, no penalty amount?
No, the following day, there is a penalty of three percent, a penalty, one percent interest. That stays in effect for thirty days before an additional penalty is added, so they have a thirty-day window to—to pay it at the initial.
Right. When did we change that, Carol? We—we used to do that ten and—
Change—
It was a while ago.
Fourteen years ago. It was quite a while.
Yeah.
It used to be the eight percent.
Right away.
Right away.
And then, we—we reduced that further.
Split it to three and five.
Yeah, I remember doing that, and we—and we did that because we recognized that there were some folks who, you know, in fact, didn't mail their payment. It just never got to us or got to us late, and we didn't want to, you know, lump someone who is largely compliant in this, you know, into the same category as someone who is not. So, I don't know, just thinking about it, and if anyone thinks that we should—I—I think the policy is fine, but I feel badly, as—as you do and as you always did, charging someone three percent when they're standing in front of you and they've always paid their taxes. You know they paid their taxes, and yet, you know, we've got to charge them an additional three percent on, you know, fifteen-hundred dollars when everything's getting expensive, so.
I hear you with regards to the—the self-fulfilling prophecy with the post office, but one of the things that we do is, we encourage people to sign up for direct debit, where the city will pull the funds on the due date—not early, on the due date, and that—you sign up for that once, and it goes on until you tell us to stop. And that's a great way to—that's the way I make sure that mine—
Yeah.
So.
And, you know, and I know not everyone can afford this, but I pay early. I mean, I—I know that taxes are due on—so, as soon as, you know—if they're due on November fifteenth, I'm paying it on October fifteenth, so I can watch for my check to clear. So, that might be an option for people. Yes?
I was going to ask, Carol, is that debit? There's no additional charge for that, right?
No, no additional charges.
As opposed to—you know, you can go online and use a credit card or an e-jet—
And there's a charge for that.
And there is a charge for those, but the direct debit, there's no charge.
Okay.
Hmm, there you go. Problem solved. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Any questions for the clerk folks? Okay, then we'll move on to the City Manager—oh, sorry, we'll move on to Liquor and Cannabis Control Board. Do you have anything for Liquor and Cannabis Control?
I do. I do.
Okay, they are in session.
Forget-me-not Flowers is applying for a second-class liquor license. Granite City Market slash Capital Candy Tobacco and Tobacco Substitute. And I know this is kind of a moot point. Foxy's had applied for an outside consumption permit, however, they are closing. I mean, we could still continue to approve that and let them continue that until they actually close. That's up to—
And they—well, they haven't withdrawn, right?
They have not withdrawn, no.
So, we'll approve—we'll approve it. There's no objection, so a motion would be in order?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions, folks? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Liquor Cannabis Control Board is adjourned. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of updates for the Council. FEMA buyouts continue to come to close. We have closed five already. Two more are scheduled on Thursday, and one is scheduled in mid-September. So, very pleased to see that—that—for the—for the families involved, that these are coming to an end, and they're getting these payouts from FEMA. I am attending the Vermont Economic Progress Council Meeting on Thursday with Carol for final approval from VFC on the Seminary Street Project. We presented the project and answered questions at the July meeting. They were not prepared to vote, because they hadn't done their internal processes, but we got strong support from the board, pretty much unanimously across the board, so we expect a—a pretty smooth sailing meeting tomorrow, and that will be our final step to—that will be the—the approval we need from them to proceed then to the bond vote this November. A hydrant update—I know this came up a couple of meetings ago, and I know you probably see the—the bagged hydrants across the city. We currently have thirty-five hydrants out of service across the city, but the Water Department is still flushing and flow testing, so they do expect a—a few more to come out of service as they do that. Of the thirty-five hydrants out of service, they believe six are repairable, and those repairs will be completed when parts arrive and when staffing time allows. Right now, the Water Department is—is preparing for the paving. They're doing basins on-on the streets that'll be paved, so they'll—once the paving contractor is here, they'll be able to move to other projects. The rest have to be replaced by digging them, which is very labor-intensive and will be a priority once paving is completed in the fall and—and through the winter once again. They have already, since they started doing this project, which was to—to test all these hydrants, they have dug and replaced twenty-one hydrants already and repaired dozens of others. Just for everyone's comfort and peace of mind, the Fire Department is intimately aware of every hydrant that is out of service throughout the city. They have a plan for any location where they may not be able to access that hydrant to have the water that they will need to—to respond to any emergencies. So, no one should be concerned. I know it can be disconcerting to see it, but the Fire Department is aware, they're in constant contact with the Water Department, and they have plans for a response anywhere across the city where there may be a hydrant that's not available to them. The paving schedule I mentioned is—the crews are working on it now. We expect our contractor to be in the week of September eighth to do—to do grading, and then paving will resume and be completed. Well, it'll resume the week of September fifteenth, and they will be here until they complete it, which may be up to two weeks. They will—they will finish everything for the season once they arrive here the week of September fifteen. So, we will certainly send updates to the public once we have a firmer grasp on the schedule, once they're here, but a week of September eighth for grading and a week of September fifteenth for pavement to go down on the streets. And then, I want to thank—I know you—thank you, Council, for approving the USW contract on the consent agenda. Just want to appreciate and thank the USW negotiating team. Very cordial, very professional process. We got this thing done in three meetings, which was terrific. So, both sides made a—a real commitment to find middle ground, and—and it shows in the results. I think we got a really good product in place that we're—we're both—both parties are happy with, so it's a great outcome. So, I want to thank them. There was a—the team that they—they put time in to—to prepare, and they came prepared, and—and it—we got done in three meetings because of that. And then, finally, just a—a welcome to Christina Kimball, who—she started this week as our new Finance Director, replacing Dawn. So, Christina has been on board for two days. Very happy with her. We've had a chance to start meeting with her in the department, and I know Carol had her meeting, Janet had her meeting, was here in the room. So, we're very happy, and she's—a—she's learning the ropes. So, welcome to Christina, to her new role here at Berry City.
Thank you. Questions? Yes?
Is there going to be—is all the paving going to be completed by the time this—this falls over?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we'll have any rollover, like we had last year?
Nope. They—once they get here the week of the fifteenth, they'll stay until it's done.
Wonderful, and I—I do want to express my thanks for that sidewalk, for that safety issue.
Perfect.
Really, just thanks very much.
Sure. Can I ask one of my typically ridiculous questions?
Sure.
No. What's— You know I'm going to do it anyway. What is the science—I've been paying attention more to the hydrants.
Yes.
And I have talked personally to the chief, and he's like, "No, we're not at all concerned." He said, "You know, we can access water. We can—if there's a hydrant out of service, there's another one, we can access the water, we're not concerned." But what is the science behind locating a hydrant?
The science behind loca—I think they have—they have standards every several hundred feet based on the volume of residences, so I know that there's—so, for example, I know that because when we talk about our paving plan for subsequent years, one of the things we do is, we—we coordinate closely with the Water Department, because they take advantage to do repairs on structures and—and infrastructure where we're paving. And so, I know that, for example, there's some streets where we look at—and when we were going through the exercise this year, when we had the extra paving money, where do we go to—to do that? And one of the considerations was, on some streets that we've—that we have on the schedule for next year, they require additional hydrants added to come into compliance with those standards. So, I don't have the exact numbers, Mayor, but I—I can certainly get them.
No, you're not going to have to.
It's a—it's a couple hundred feet based on the density of the housing.
Gotcha.
And so, I—I—I don't know where they—the standard originates, but there's a—there's a math—a math equation that—that is applied.
Gotcha. Mr. Mayor? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I, yes?
I think we talked about it a little bit in '22 when we were installing the dry hydrants on, over by Spalding High School. And then there was another one. It was based on density of people and how much water volume.
Yeah. Interesting. Thank you.
Sure.
Always learning. Okay. No questions for the managers. So we'll move on to item 8A on the agenda. This is the flood resiliency plan update. Counselor Guston?
Thank you, Mayor. So this should be a relatively quick one, but I think there's an interesting conversation to be had from council. Tonight, we're going to hear updates from Downstreet Housing. And Nicholas, I'm afraid I can't, excuse me, manager, I can't, afraid I can't see in the audience. Is Downstreet Director Angie Harbin there?
He's here. Yep.
Great. So in a moment, I'm gonna turn it over to her, but as you could see from the memo that she had prepared, one of our goals in the original flood resiliency plan was to set up the revolving loan fund to help provide access to housing and to help improve housing stock in Berry City. And we've seen from this memo, no utilization of that fund. So I think there are some interesting questions ahead of council about whether we make modifications for that fund. And I know Angie had posed some of those questions. So I'm looking forward to hearing more from her.
Angie, how are you?
Doing well. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here.
So Amanda set that up and said almost everything that I have to say. We did establish revolving loan fund with some of the city's ARPA funding. And our thought around this was Downstreet already offers revolving loan fund, grants and loans for households with median incomes at or below 80%. And then this loan fund was going to fill the gap essentially between 81% and 120%. Or it would allow lower income households to have more funding for any repairs that they needed. And so what we, we've been, you know, we've included this in our kind of our regular, this is the things that Downstreet has to offer. But we haven't done a targeted marketing for this. It wasn't part of our original plan or conversations. And so what we have found is folks from Berry City who are coming in for this loan generally, or coming in for the home repair loans are generally, the work they need done is fitting within that 20,000 that Downstreet has to offer, which can be a silent loan or part of that can be a grant. So it's a more desirable product. The one person that we had come in who would have not qualified for our loan, would have qualified for this loan, opted for HELOC instead. So my question for the council, and I actually, I thought about this after I submitted this last week, is originally this all went through the Housing Task Force, then the Housing Task Force presented this to the council. So I don't know where your decision making around making changes falls. But the questions we have is, does the city want to partner with us in a more aggressive campaign around these funds? For instance, city communication channels, or if you have tax or water bill inserts, we could include something about this that's getting out to everyone. And/or would you like to reallocate some or all of the RLF funds to another resource? Either, I'm assuming it needs to be a housing aligned purpose because it was originally ARPA funds, but through Downstreet or through another source?
All good questions. I think we need to answer the second question first before we answer the first question. And that is, and I guess I, I for one would rely more on your expertise, you know, how effective we haven't, obviously haven't deployed a great deal of money through, through the fund. So.
Is it higher than it was?
So is there, so I guess I'd have to rely on, I'd have to rely on your expertise. I mean, is there a place where you think we could better deploy these funds, whether it's, you know, concentrating on the North End, trying to, you know, there's still people recovering on the North End to try to help people on the North End, to try to, you know, dedicate the funds to a new housing initiative. I, I'd love to hear some ideas.
So what, I mean, what I've heard from our homeownership center is that a lot of the folks that certainly coming to Downstreet, they're unable to bear the repayment option. So when you're looking at a revolving loan fund and hoping to get those, that funding back from say, the North End, you know, a silent loan might be a lot more effective than an amortized loan with repayment. So that's something for the city to consider. I know when we first talked about this, there was a strong interest in funds revolving rather quickly, but that hasn't happened. So if you really want to help families on the North End, that would be a consideration. There is an infill work group who has been exploring, there's an infill study that the city commissioned maybe a year ago or so. And, you know, what do we do about this infill possibilities? And one of the things that group has recommended, or suggests, or I guess queried, was whether or not there was any source that could be used to help people with pre-development on infill lots. And I don't have a real clear, like this is what that would look like. But that, that was definitely proposed. I mean, I do think you've got a lot of lower income folks in Berry who really do need the help with home repairs. And if we're open to silent loans, we could probably pretty quickly disperse most of this funding. And you would get that back when someone sells their home.
So we'd have no clear amortization. So it would, yeah. And, you know, I like that idea and I'd like to hear more about it. My initial concern is that there's no predictability. You know, what we, what we like about, for example, Prospect Heights, and you and I have had this discussion, is that, you know, I do anticipate that the city will be fully funded. We can sell lots on a sliding scale. So obviously, someone who is, someone who can't afford the full price of a lot will be able to subsidize them. But the, the wonderful part about it is I fully anticipate that will generate in excess of seven figures that we can then deploy into another housing project and kind of keep doing it. But you need that predictability. And when you have a silent loan, you don't have the payback predictability. If someone owns their home, and then you always run the risk that in the event of some sort of a foreclosure to, you know, a superior mortgage, the city's money is gone.
Yes.
And we don't have that at all. So those are, those are just some of the concerns I, you know, I can get over it. But, but those are, you know, those are just some of the concerns that I have is I, I realize when you talk about the cost of housing, the cost of building, you know, and I've said this time and time, it's horrifying to me.
It's horrifying.
You know, as someone who's lived here for decades and, and I see a house that I want, that our starter home that Karen and I bought for $62,000, selling for $375,000, it's horrifying to me. You know, how can folks afford that? And sometimes I wonder whether, you know, $250,000 at, you know, $20,000 a pop, does that really make a difference? And I realize maybe it does. To someone whose home isn't well insulated and they can be a little warmer, it may make a huge difference to them.
A new roof.
But is there, or a new roof. But I just keep asking myself, is there a better way to deploy these funds such that we can help more people? So council, what do you, what do you all think? Yes, Counselor Guston, sorry, missed you.
No, that's quite all right. I have a question for Angie and then I guess a sort of general follow-up thought on, on my understanding of council's intentions when we set this funding out. The question is that you had listed under what we're seeing on the ground program in eligibility, a number of inquiries have not met program eligibility requirements. Could you speak a little further about that?
So I'm guessing, I didn't pull details for this, that you've got folks who can't afford the amortized payments. So that would knock them out or their over income. Those would be the only two, or whatever the work they needed done wasn't within the specifications of this fund, which is primarily health and safety repairs.
Okay. So I, thank you. And I guess my, my response to sort of what is our general philosophy behind this, this funding, I think it was to improve existing housing stock a little bit more than simply creating new housing. And as Angie just spoke to, there's, there is a need for, continues to be a need for improving existing housing stock. It sounds like maybe we just haven't targeted the requirements for, for this program enough. We had talked a little bit about what's on, strikes me as a variation on that silent loan when we set out the funding, which was the idea of if someone needed to sell their house but needed to rewire it first, that might provide a faster turnaround and might also upgrade and make the house safer as it goes forward. I realize, what do we, do we look at people who are close to selling their house and need to make health and safety improvements? Is that a way to bridge the gap between seeing a return more quickly, but also making sure that people have the ability to continue to, to make their houses safer? Or is that splitting the hairs too finely? I'm kind of just brainstorming here.
I mean, we could make a, an effort to actively market the product. So, so sending information to local realtors. So anybody who's likely to have a home for sale in Berry, they're using a local realtor, they'll know about this. And I don't know if the city has anything that they send out regular to all of the residents, but if we were able to include something in that mailing, we've had that, work with some success in other municipalities.
Well, I mean, we do. We send water and sewer bills four times a year. We send property tax bills once a year. And I think we're kind of right around the corner from a water and sewer bill, aren't we?
Well, they, they've got them printed and.
Oh, so they're ready to go.
Great envelopes, yeah.
But, but it's only every three months. So it would be, you know, roughly three months from now that we'd be doing it again. And of course, we'd have to prep the mailer. So that would give, you know, 30 to 45 days to prep the mailer and design it. And then we could try sending it out that way.
So I would be happy on our end to volunteer to create in whatever size makes sense for your envelope, something that could go out as part of a mailer. And then also do outreach to real estate agents. I think Downstreet has the capacity to take that on. And then, I don't know if there are other city communication channels that you'd want to get the word out about it. And we could just see what it looks like in, you know, six months without making any changes. Does that feel like maybe the best next step?
Yeah. Well, it's, and it's relatively quick. I mean, it's either gonna work or it's not. And if it doesn't, then we'll have to look to a plan B.
And then Cheryl, can you tell me offhand what size those mailers would be? Is it an eight and a half by 11? Or do you want a small insert?
I think an eight and a half by 11 would, would do well.
Okay.
With the machine, just to keep it consistent with the bill itself.
Perfect. All right. We will take care of that. Anything else?
Colorful, please.
Yes.
If it's black and white, I throw it out. Throw it right out. If it's got color in it, I'm, I'm looking.
We're gonna mail one to your house directly.
Yes.
Is it possible that we can include that with any of our election stuff?
Um.
Maybe even just, would the BCA be able to approve it to have a table out in the fort, in the lobby?
Oh, you, oh, you could, you could put a table out in the lobby. That would be okay, right?
Sure. Just trying to think about ways that we get our residents to come in and kind of give them this information.
And we could put some out here at city hall and perhaps at the library and, like you said, even to some of the, you know, there's not that many local realtors based right here in Berry City. It wouldn't take that long to run a bunch of them down to their offices as well.
I have a question.
Yes, of course.
Do these, you know, do sort of efforts, it sounds like efforts to make your home more energy efficient would fall into the possibilities of this?
I think with this particular product, it does. With our general home repair loan, it does.
Right.
And the energy efficiency, we try to connect people to Capstone if at all possible.
Yeah. I was just wondering whether there was, whether there might be, I mean, I know Capstone and Efficiency Vermont and all these, whether there were ways that they could, like the realtors, be aware of this so that if there was gap space in, for somebody who was applying for their programs, they would be aware of this?
I will double check. Capstone, we do mutual referrals pretty regularly. And we get all kinds of referrals that don't, it's like, what are you talking about? We can't do this.
Sure.
And I'm sure the reverse happens as well. So, but yes, I will double check and make sure that's still happening. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Amy Gelford?
Thanks. I was just wondering, the dollar amount reminded me of the rough estimate for some of the elevation and floodproofing. So I don't know if there's anybody waiting on that money. I know that's different than splitting it up amongst, you know, more people with a smaller dollar amount. But if there are people and projects ready to go on that, that seems like maybe a good use of the money. The other thing I wonder about is there are right now several houses for sale in the city that are under $200,000, but they need work on them. So they're kind of not ready for your average family to just move right into. And I don't know if that's something the city could get involved in, or if it's something that maybe, it could be some partnership with youth bill or the career center or something. But just, you know, houses that are not, you know, they're not falling down, but they need work before your average family can move in. And maybe if there's some way to facilitate that.
Yeah, I can address the elevations thing. I, I wouldn't recommend use of this funding for that. That would maybe get you one house. And we're proposing to apply for elevation funding for everyone who applied, who requested it through the CDP GDR grant. So there's more than one person who was sort of left behind the no fund line. So I, I wouldn't recommend that at this point.
You should.
I appreciate the thought around youth build and the homes for sale under 200,000. I think we could hit those real estate agents and we could also start coordinating with youth build to help with some of that work. Finding someone to do the work is also a significant challenge right now.
Absolutely.
I don't know if Counselor Guston put her hand back up or.
Did you have your hand up, Counselor?
It's a new hand. I'm sorry. I, I just want to, and it sounds like the conversation has moved in this place already. I put it up wanting to urge that we do, I wholeheartedly am behind the outreach with the water and sewer bills, but I do want to make sure we also do the outreach to the realtors, you know, and as was just suggested, that there, there is some possibility of that. And I guess pose a question for, for Angie as you're evaluating applications for this fund, would flood mitigation fall under your definition of health and safety improvements?
So it's a $20,000 max. So that flood mitigation would have to be within that range or they would have to have some other source for the remaining. But yes, that would.
So like moving utilities up, that kind of thing. Okay. Thank you.
And we have a wonderful local newspaper. So I don't know, maybe Mr. Delcor would be willing to do a story on it.
What a front page story. None of this is part of the fold thing.
Who knows? He just might contact you. You never, you, you just never know.
Give him your phone number again.
He has my phone number. Trust me, he has my phone number. He's not afraid to use it. No, he could contact Angie and talk to the fund manager and a little bit about the program.
He has my phone number as well.
And even that little block under, you know, it would, it's an investment, but even that little block under the fold, which is, I think, like 100 or 200, I mean, we've all used it during elections. It's like 100 or $200, the one right on the bottom on the front page.
I've never used it, but I was.
Yeah.
After the front page story, that is.
Okay. Angie, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Always good to see you.
Thank you.
Any questions, council, on the flood resiliency plan update? Anything else, counselor? No? You're good?
Thank you.
And council will move on to item 8B on the agenda. This is the regional future land use map discussion with the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. How are you folks?
Great.
How are you?
Doing well. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
And here is the mayor and council for making time for us on your agenda. We leave the managers putting up a presentation. Just really briefly, I've met many of you before talking about the housing infill project. Just as a reminder, I'm Brian Voight, Senior Planner and Program Manager at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And I'm here tonight with Nikki. I'll turn it over to Nikki to give you a rundown.
Hi, I'm Nikki Sabado, Planner with Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. I'm gonna start with just giving you an overview of the Act 181 legislation that we're here to talk about and a little bit about the process and the tier framework. So I'll just start. In 2024, Vermont Legislature passed Act 181, which updates Act 250, Vermont statewide land use permitting to create a tiered framework for location-based land use jurisdiction. Act 181 requires regional planning commissions to develop future land use maps as part of the regional planning process. The Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission is currently working on a draft future land use map and updates to the regional plan. We anticipate submitting the regional future land use map for state approval in early 2026. So the tiered framework, I'll just provide a bit of detail. As you know, Act 181 shifted Act 250's jurisdiction from being triggered by the size to the location. It's divided into three tiers. So tier one is composed of tier one A and tier one B, which are both areas with capacity for growth. Tier one A areas will have full Act 250 exemption and transitions Act 250 jurisdiction for planned growth areas to municipalities with administrative capacity. Tier one B areas will have up to 50 units exempt from Act 250 and limits Act 250 jurisdiction to encourage smart growth housing. Tier two, the jurisdictional thresholds will remain and is the status quo. Municipalities can stay as a tier two and follow similar Act 250 review format. Tier three will have additional jurisdiction for critical natural resource areas. This tier is not based on regional maps and will be developed by the A and R. Process considerations would be municipalities must demonstrate administrative capacity to implement local regulations to be eligible for tier one A and tier one B. Downtown and village centers, planned growth areas and village areas should accommodate a substantial portion of the housing needed to meet regional targets. The intent of the statewide RPC mapping methodology is to provide a consistent and statewide delineation of the future land use areas. Areas for growth are mapped at the local scale. So VAPDA recommends defining core areas first, sequencing mapping from the inside out. Did you want to speak?
No.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Am I in the right spot?
I know, but.
So I'll just, and then I'll just go into the future land use areas, the process in a little more detail. So if you go to the next slide, as you know, we're creating this in coordination with member municipalities. So the future land use area map, we're kind of looking at it in three sections. So there's high density growth areas, low to moderate density areas and rural areas. So if you go to the next slide, I'll just go a little bit into detail for each area. The centers are generally mixed use, bringing community economic activity and civic assets together. These areas accommodate a majority of the housing. These areas accommodate a majority of the housing growth target. Next slide would be around neighborhoods. These are planned growth areas and village areas. PGAs, planned growth areas, have high-density existing settlement and future growth areas with high concentrations of population. Generally, this area has an active streetscape and multimodal transportation system. Village areas can be a traditional settlement or proposed new settlement area. So turning now to low to moderate-density growth areas. Transition infill areas are areas of existing or planned commercial office mixed-use or residential development. They are generally adjacent to neighborhoods, or they can be standalone areas, served by water, wastewater, or both. Resource-based recreation areas, generally large-scale recreation facilities such as concentrated nail, sorry, trail networks or lakeshores ski resorts. Enterprise areas are mainly locations of high economic activity and employment that are not adjacent to a planned growth area, such as natural resource extraction or industrial areas. And then hamlets are generally areas that do not meet criteria of a village center and are not really planned for significant growth. And then finally, the rural area section, rural general, you know, this is for low-density residential development. Some commercial development compatible with productive lands and natural areas. Then there's rural ag and forestry. This is considered carefully managed development, which promotes the working landscape and rural economy. And then finally, rural conservation, areas of significant natural resources identified by the RPCs and also municipalities based on the A and R mapping. So I'll let Brian speak a bit about the mapping.
Sure. Thanks, Nikki. So just a few things really quickly about the maps and the tiered framework. Mr. Manager, could you go back to slide 2, please? So as Nikki mentioned, the map is currently under development. And VAPTA produced a methodology by which they identify, so they took state statute and identified available data resources and the methods by which we apply that data to designating these different areas that Nikki just described. And it's really important to note that the Tier 1, both Tier 1A and 1B are optional and up to the municipality to determine whether they want to pursue either Tier 1A or Tier 1B designation. Tier 3, as Nikki mentioned, are really, you could think of it almost like an overlay district of a sort. It is, the intent of the Tier 3 is to identify these critical natural resource areas. And essentially, the difference there is just the threshold by which Act 250 review is triggered. So it'll be lower for these Tier 3 locations, again, based on the fact that the Agency of Natural Resources has identified them as critical natural resource areas within the state. So it's likely that we will be submitting the map in late January or early February. As we conclude the draft mapping process, we will make the map available in paper format, if you prefer. We're also planning to have a digital interactive map where people can review the map, review their municipality or areas within the region that they know a lot about, and click on the map and provide feedback saying, yes, we think this designation makes sense. Oh, no, we think maybe it should be something different. Can we talk about this, or can we think about that? While there is this methodology that's been developed, there is still a bit of subjectivity. And I would caution you to say a bit, not a lot in terms of flexibility. We can vary from the methods, but when we, the Regional Planning Commission, present the future land use map to the Land Use Review Board, we need to note areas that were designated sort of outside of the shared methodology. So it's not that you can't do it, but we need to document it. And the Land Use Review Board needs to buy our reasoning for designating it as such. And then the last thing I'll say here, before I remember four or five other things to say, is that the future land use map, the regional future land use map, does not supersede your zoning. It doesn't dictate what can or can't happen in a location. So I just want to make sure that folks understand that we're not taking over regulatory authority by getting approval of this regional future land use map. It's a question that has come up and passed meetings with municipalities. And I just want to put that out there so that everyone is clear that that is not the intent of this map. It is to designate these locations where there is greater flexibility as it relates to Act 250, or in the case of a Tier 3 designation, maybe a little bit less flexibility than existing Act 250. And then the last, last thing I'll say, see, I promised at least one more, is that you can opt not to pursue one of the Tier 1 designations. You remain in Tier 2, and that's essentially the status quo, as Nikki mentioned. And so development decisions would be evaluated according, again, to local zoning. And if they exceed the Act 250 trigger, then they would go through a regular Act 250 proceeding. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Questions, Counsel? Yes.
So would you say that creating a designation would give us more flexibility to do what we need to as opposed to just leaving it as it is?
Do you mean pursuing a Tier 1A or Tier 1B designation?
Well, if we do 1 or 3 as opposed to a 2, does that change the flexibilities?
You don't have a say, and neither do we, over the Tier 3. That's a locational designation that will be established by the A and R and the Land Use Review Board.
Right, okay.
Tier 1A or Tier 1B do offer flexibility. So for Tier 1B, up to 50 housing units would be, and under 10 acres, would be exempt from the Act 250 jurisdiction. That doesn't mean it's exempt from some level of review at the municipality. It doesn't do away with permitting. You would also still, if you're building on a state highway, you'd need to get your Section 1111 permit for adjusting a curb cut or intersection with a state highway. You can't fill in wetlands, you know, so there's still permitting requirements. But it brings the decision-making about the development, again, for Tier 1B, fewer than 50 units. It brings that to the municipal level. And what that also means is that it then doesn't pass on to state review afterwards.
Right, for the Act 250 review.
Decision is made at the municipal level, and then a decision is issued. And then Tier 1A just offers greater flexibility, but certainly comes at a potential cost. So with Tier 1A, you get a full Act 250 exemption. However, municipal staff then takes over that responsibility.
Right.
And in addition to that, any existing Act 250 permits within that Tier 1A, that responsibility also passes to the municipal staff at that point.
That's what I was thinking as well. And can I ask a follow-up to the manager?
Of course.
How do you feel our staff capacity would be? I know we're currently down to one person, if not two, in that department.
Not feasible at the moment, no.
And Janet, feel free to jump in on any of this because you're directly impacted and I value and respect your opinion. So feel free to jump in. So that's not, I mean, realistically, given, I mean, I think it's a decision that any municipality shouldn't take lightly. We could just opt to fall into Tier 2, keep things status quo for now. But that doesn't mean that a year from now, when Janet has three more people working in her department, that we couldn't then opt into 1A or 1B. So it's a decision we can make, but it sounds like, from what I've read, once you make that decision, it's kind of hard to put that toothpaste back in the tube once you do it. Not impossible, but not...
Not impossible, and most likely not for good reasons. As in, you weren't meeting your obligations and the Land Use Review Board might pull that back. But I'm glad you mentioned the, sort of the time aspect of this. So if you decide you want to pursue Tier 1B designation in the shorter term, and I'm not advocating for this, I'm just making you aware that it's a possibility, you can contract out for those services. So if Janet's still a couple of team members short, and you knew that there was a potential development coming down the pipe in town, fewer than 50 units, but more than what would ordinarily trigger an Act 250 review, you could consider contracting out that work to make sure that it's potentially easier for a pending development to go through without having to worry about municipal review and then full Act 250 review. You could go after Tier 1B in the short term and then decide, hey, things are actually working out pretty well. Janet and her team are really on a roll. Let's go after Tier 1A because we're ready, we think we're ready to do that. And so Tier 1A, well, Tier 1B is simply an opt-in exercise. The town or city in this case designates an area or areas that they would like to specify as Tier 1B locations. So it's not the entire city. And then, you know, those areas are then benefit from those exemptions. Again, longer term, you could pursue the Tier 1A option if it's in the best interest of the community to do so.
I like it. So one of the interactive maps that you mentioned, do you have, do you have any idea when you might be going live with those, give or take? I'm not going to hold you to it, so...
I would say November-ish, you know, in case the turkey doesn't put you to sleep at Thanksgiving. Maybe my interactive map will, but...
Well, not for me. I'm really looking forward to seeing what the area looks like and how, you know, you have, having lived here for decades, you have your suspicions about what those areas might look like or what a map might look like. But as you said, a lot of times you don't really understand all of the details until you take the deep dive into it. So I'm going to be really interested to see what those look like. And I think it does present, it really does present some opportunities, I think, for municipalities, for towns and cities in Vermont. So I like what you're doing, I really do. And the question is going to be, you know, how quickly we move? And don't worry, Janet, you'll be front and center in the discussion, so don't freak out on me.
So I'll just put out there that, you know, you're, well, thank you first of all for your feedback. Your input is critical for these Tier 1 pieces. Again, this is not a decision that we're going to make for you. Given Berry City's role within the region, the population base of the city as well, we'd be certainly happy to work with staff to even game out what might make sense for a Tier 1B area. Again, just thinking maybe about the easing into the program approach. So if there's interest from the Council to have staff spend some time working with us, thinking about that, and, you know, potentially presenting some ideas for you all to deliberate over at a future meeting, we're more than happy to do that. The Tier 1A, I meant to mention this earlier, Tier 1A, the city will actually file an official application with the Land Use Review Board. That application process is not due to come online until January of next year. So while we understand the, generally speaking, the benefits of pursuing a Tier 1 designation, it's not totally clear at this time how involved that application process is. So again, we encourage you to keep your mind open about Tier 1B. If you think it's worthwhile for staff to engage with us a little bit on fleshing out that idea or ideas more, we're happy to do so.
I mean, it would seem that if a municipality was going to pursue Tier 1A, it would seem like in the application, they would have to demonstrate capacity at some level. Not just, we'll get it done, don't worry.
Yes, which is kind of what you say in Tier 1B. Yeah, we'll get it done. We have the capacity. And again, we don't specify whether it's in-house or contracted. We have not, as a regional planning commission, discussed this, and I think it's unlikely that we would go down this route. But I believe at least one of the regional planning commissions might be opening the door to being that contracted party. Again, that's not something we've discussed, so not, don't want to point that out as an option in case anyone's familiar with one of the other regions that might be doing things a little bit differently.
Would you care to guess whether you would?
I suspect no in the short term.
Yeah.
Just given our current staff workload, I don't think it's necessarily feasible for us, unless we were to bring an additional staff member on with that specific task as their primary role in the organization. If it's something that you're interested in, by all means, reach out to Christian Meyer, our director, reach out to our board, or have Janet, in her capacity as your representative on the Board of Commissioners, raise that at a future meeting.
I mean, I would. I mean, if we could sub that out, I mean, obviously, you'd have to have, if we were to look to the Regional Planning Commission to provide that service, so to speak, it obviously couldn't be just Berry City. I mean, you know, you'd have to have buy-in from, you know, maybe from Berlin, from Montpelier, from, you know, from Berry Town, where we're all saying, look, given our volume of development, we don't have, we don't have the, we're not going to keep that person busy at all. But if Montpelier was saying, look, which I think is always smarter in Vermont, I don't understand why we don't have a county form of government. You know, if we took more of a regional approach and we said, okay, we'll work with you and have you do this review for us, it seems like that would, that would make sense for us. And then my last question is simply, in terms of our feedback, I'm sure it's easier for you if we speak through one voice, in terms of our feedback to the maps.
That would be preferred, but consensus isn't always...
So if there's no objection from the manager, we'll, hey, Janet. Well, no, we'll provide, you know, the Council will review the maps and we can provide that feedback to Janet, and she can review the feedback. And if she wants to push back on some of it, saying, you know, as Director of Planning, I really don't agree with this, and then she'll work through Nicholas and it comes back to the Council anyway. So it's all good. Yes? Oh, sorry, Dustin. You're really small up there, Counsel, because this...
Absolutely. I'm certainly, I think the, heeding the warnings about staff capacity for Tier 1A, fully heard. I am curious if our planning director or our manager is intrigued by the Tier 1B and sees some possibilities for Berry City. I realize we're a little ways out and we haven't seen the maps yet, but I'd just be curious on a, like, a generally hot or cold sense right now.
I mean, I'll start and Janet, you know, shake your head if you think I'm going in the wrong direction. I think 1B seems compelling. I especially like to hear that there is ability to sort of contract it out or do something more regional. Because there, I agree with what the mayor said, that, you know, even if we did have capacity, or if we went the extra step and hired someone to do this, there wouldn't be enough to keep them busy on a full-time basis. So I think 1B with external help is probably compelling. And Janet, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, I'm fully on board with at least 1B at this point. Now that it's been presented to Council, we can start having those, excuse me, conversations at the Planning Commission and start, you know, really doing a deep dive. Because after the first of the year, you guys are going to have to make a decision based on everybody's feedback and comfort level and future growth, where we want to take all this. So at least 1B for now is what I've thought all along.
And I'll just reiterate, you know, Tier 1B, well, Tier 1A or 1B is not for the entire municipality. And, you know, based on the mapping work we have done already, there are areas that would be eligible for either Tier 1A or Tier 1B designation.
But you can always, as you pointed out, you can always jump up, you can move from 1B to a 1A.
Correct, correct.
You know, it's not like, it's not like by taking your approach, you're giving anything up.
It's very flexible.
Yeah, so, yeah, I like it. I'm really looking forward to the maps.
When the grand decision needs to be made, the application?
So for your decision regarding Tier 1B would need to be complete, let's see, we need to issue, or we need to release the map to the Land Use Review Board 60 days before, so anyway, in December for sure. Yeah, early December on a Tier 1B decision.
Any other questions? Yes.
You said we could switch from a Tier 2 at some point to back, or up to a Tier 1?
You said we could switch from a Tier 2 at some point to back, or up to a Tier 1?
So Tier 2 is just the default. There's nothing, you don't need to do anything to do Tier 2. Tier 2 is sort of, if you choose not to do anything, you're Tier 2.
I mean, the same Act 250 stuff.
So, yes, so, um, two, two things about that. If you think that Tier 1B is something that you have interest in, and it seems at least, like the room's sort of warming up to the idea, our preference would be that you go for that with this, um, initial future, uh, regional future land use map. And the, uh, the primary reason for that is, um, you know, suppose come June of next year, you decide, ah, maybe we did miss an opportunity, let's, let's go for, for 1B. It's not that you can't do that at that time, or that the Regional Planning Commission wouldn't support you, but what that does mean is that if the area that's designated or desired to be designated as Tier 1B exceeds 10 acres in size, um, that then triggers quite a bit of work for the Regional Planning Commission in terms of having to go through the formal plan adoption process.
Okay.
Again, so, um, again, not, not saying you can't do it or we won't support it, but if you think it's a direction you want to, want to go, let's, um, let's try to go there, this go around and, um, buy us all a little bit of breathing room.
Sure. And we've got give or take when, is there a drop dead date to make that decision on, on 1B?
I'll, I'll have a, a better sense of that.
I'm not going to hold you at any, it's a work in progress.
I would say early December.
Okay.
Thinking that, um, will be hopefully in front of the land use review board by, um, February at the, at the latest.
Yeah.
So that gives us enough time to meet the, um, the statutorily defined process in terms of the number of public hearings that we have, um, making the information available to the land use review board prior to those public hearings and then engaging that full process of the review.
Perfect. Any other questions, folks?
I'm sorry.
Yes? Oh, sorry. There, there you are again.
I, I don't quit. Um, I just sort of thinking in what you had said about an area greater than 10 acres requiring a more full plan for the Tier 1B and, and the Tier 1A as, well, the Tier 1B. Um, are there areas it just doesn't make sense to apply that to? If I remember incorrectly, that our designated downtown already has some Act 250 exemptions, and so we might not want to jump through these hoops for, like, the downtown, which I could see being a potential site, um, where we might want to pursue denser, um, sort of less regulated how, um, development, that kind of thing? Or do they not interact at all? Or, or what?
So the existing Act 250 exemptions will sunset at some point, and I don't know exactly when that is.
End of year for designation.
End of, end of this year or end of next year?
Okay, so we should pursue Tier 1B for places that have sort of existing Act 250 exemptions, that we want to preserve those existing exemptions, so we can continue that type of development.
Correct. And then, just, just to your point about, uh, requiring a, a plan for 10 acres or, or more, it's not that you need to develop a specific plan for that location, it's more that a change in the future land use map, greater than 10 acres, triggers a heightened level of review, and so we need to go back, we, the Regional Planning Commission, would need to go back through the plan adoption process and bring the new map to the land use review board, um, at that time.
Understood. Thank you very much.
And we have very few parcels in the city that are 10 acres or greater. Just keep that in mind.
Feels like 1B. Yeah, I mean, 1A just, as I read through the, well, when it was adopted, um, yeah, 1B just seemed like a big lift for a municipality like Berry. And, and you know, just given the staff constraints and you never know what you're going to develop and it's all on you.
Yep.
So that was just, that just seemed like a really, a lot of uncertainty, uh, for me. And yeah. Yeah.
The name of the game for sure.
It is. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're, you're great partners. We appreciate you.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, we're at item 8C on the agenda. So the city treasurer is going to talk to us about the city funds.
I wonder how much talking I'm going to do because I wrote this memo.
You did a great job.
Essentially, it's like, you all have the memo. Just read it. Any questions? Um, when I started, uh, back the beginning of July, one of the things that, uh, that I was working on was every year there's, uh, transfers that have to be made between, um, the funds and the general fund based on expenses that are made. So I was going through every fund, um, and realized that it's been a long time with some of them in particular, since there's been any presentation to the council and that all of you, with the exception of the mayor, uh, have, uh, probably varying familiarities with what different funds we have, um, that we are the custodians for, uh, and what they, what they're for. Um, and, uh, I had been invited to speak to the cemetery committee, uh, to review the cemetery funds, uh, last week, and that got me thinking about, um, you know, expanding to, to cover all the different funds. So, um, the first few pages of the memo that I gave you are quick overviews of the different funds, uh, where they came from, what their restrictions are, if there are restrictions to them. And then the last several pages are individual, um, reports on each of the funds, uh, what we've used them for in the past, what examples of the kinds of things, uh, that they have funded, um, an idea of what the balances are, any restrictions that, that exist in the many amounts of money that are restricted. But the quick thing, of course, is the, is the overview on the first page, which shows you the list of funds, uh, shows you the, the total balances as of the end of the fiscal year, the end of June, and then the available balance, um, because as I said, there are some things that have restricted funds, um, so that not, not everything that's in the balance is available, so. Um, and you did make a $20,000 allocation out of the opioid fund today, so that balance just went down by $20,000, but that's a good thing. We're very excited about continuing our support of Turning Point Center, so. So I don't know if there are any specific questions. There's a hand. Counselor's bawling.
I have a question about the bike path allocation and the Semperbonne Bike Path Fund. I don't understand how these numbers are adding up, so please walk me through this. When I look at that first chart or table that you have at the top, it says we have $88,775.03, and that's the total balance, and that's what's also available as of 6/30, correct?
Yep.
And when I scroll down onto this next sheet in the Semperbonne Fund, at the very last, the very last line says Bike Path Allocation, and there was 1.1 million allocated.
That's, that's allocation out of the Bequest Fund, not the specific Bike Path Fund. There are two, there are actually three, but there are two Semperbonne Funds. One was $500,000 specifically for Bike Paths, specifically for the connectivity between Berry City and Berry Town. Berry Town also received $500,000. The other thing that we received, the larger Bequest, was the Semperbonne Bequest Fund, and the last million of that, 1.1 million of that, when we got down to that's what we had left, the council made the decision to allocate the rest of that money towards the Bike Path.
Okay.
So we had the 1.1 million allocated to the Bike Path, plus the 500,000 that was, what was remaining of the 500,000 at the moment. So we have 88,000 that is dedicated to the Bike Path, can only be spent on the Bike Path.
Okay.
And then in the Bequest Fund, where we have just under 600,000 available, it has been allocated to the Bike Path, but that is a council decision, and the council could review its decision and reallocate those funds based on changing priorities.
Okay, so you're saying that the, let me just, let me just repeat this back and make sure I got it. The 88,000 is, was specifically part of the designation by the Semperbonne Fund for the Bike Path, and then there was money left over?
The 88,000 was designated by Mr. Semperbonne.
For the.
For Bike Path only.
Okay. And then there was money left over from the.
The Bequest.
The Bequest Fund, and the council said, okay, well, let's give whatever's left to the Bike Path, or give this much to the Bike Path.
Use it for Bike Path Funds. We're not giving it to anybody, we are the Bike.
Right, 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 right. So we're going to allocate it to that.
Yes.
So, um, my, I have a couple of questions about this. So there's, there is potentially money there to do more to the Bike Path.
Correct.
In theory.
Correct.
But the Bike Path Committee hasn't met, and I'm curious, did, did Berry Town do anything with their allocation for the Bike Path?
I don't know what they've, what they've done with their, with their funds.
Just curious.
I know that there had been talks about the, um, uh, using the Sterling Hill area as a point of contact, coming down the Sterling Hill area to then hook up with the end of our Bike Path, which is on Bridge Street.
Yep.
Right in that neck of the woods. So I know that there had been conversations, and I know that Berry City had, as you can see, we had spent over $400,000 in explorations, working along that, that stuff, that area. Um, I'm not sure what happened, what the corresponding work was being done in the town.
Okay, so, excellent. Thank you, thank you for that.
Did, did the Semperbonne Bequest, um, specify exactly what the Bike Path was? Or could Bike Path Funds be used for, um, things like bike, you know, bike lanes on roads that connect us to Berry Town?
The Bike Path Bequest, as it says here, said for completing the Bike Path that links both Berry City and Berry Town communities.
And then the money that we added to it.
The council, the money that the council allocated to the Bike Path could be used for anything associated with.
With the bike.
With the Bike Path.
Okay, okay, that's, that's interesting to know.
But I do think that it would be a, a, a good exercise for the council to, particularly with the Semperbonne Bequest, with that, um, $600,000, to, uh, have a conversation around changing priorities. Is the Bike Path still something or some variation thereof, something that, uh, that the, the city would like to, uh, re-energize and move forward with? Are there other priorities? Are there, you know, I think it's rather than have $600,000 sit, you know?
No. Is there a, um, trustee of the Semperbonne Fund? Like, who? That's you? But what about for Berry Town?
Yeah, and I'm not in any kind of.
Like formal capacity?
There, there was.
There would be, right?
I mean, much like Eugene Cozy, I mean, I'm.
Yeah.
Currently still the trustee of the Eugene Cozy Trust. The, I'll be relieved of my responsibilities this year when I file the final tax return.
Okay.
And there's about $50,000 actually left in, that I anticipate will be going to the city. Um, and, and then that concludes your services trustee. So years ago, it was actually Tommy.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom Semperbonne, his brother, was the trustee, but then once the trustee gives the Bequest to the city or town, you're, you're done.
Okay.
You provide a, an accounting and you're, you're finished.
We did form a committee that, and we, um, entertained, uh, proposals, which is where that laundry list of, of things, projects came from. Um, and the committee scored the proposals, reviewed and scored the proposals, and then made a presentation to council. I would say two-thirds maybe of the projects on the list came through the, uh, through that committee, that review committee, um, and then others have come directly to the council or through other avenues, but, um, so there was, there was a process that was put in place.
So had to total them up.
I, I decided not to do that.
I did.
I did, but sorry.
$6,691,451.57 available, not necessarily balanced. Um, so when you break it all down, what I call general fund related, um, $3.2 million, and then cemetery related, $3.4, and then the Italian American Memorial, I didn't know, I didn't know what to call that, so I just put it in a category by itself. But, you know, interestingly, that has $31,000 in it, and it's for the maintenance of the granite benches and the.
Statue itself.
Yeah, we had a little bit of a discussion at the Cemetery Commission about that, it was, you know, because there's $31,000 for the maintenance currently to maintain the statue, we, we clean it annually, we clean the benches, we clean the statue. It doesn't really mention the park, though.
No, no, and I don't, I have not found any kind of documentation that says this is, you know, any kind of agreement, or same with, we talked about when I was at the Cemetery Committee last week, same with the, um, St. Monica money.
Right.
Um, you know, it, it came with the cemetery and we don't have anything that talks about, you know, anything specific other than it should be treated like perpetual care money, which means you can't spend the principal.
Right.
But the Italian Memorial is, you know, all money that could, you know, none of it's restricted. And, uh, but we don't know whether the thought was that it could be spent on maintaining or improving the park or not. We don't, we don't know.
Yeah, and a couple of these, so, you know, as I, as we discussed at the Cemetery Commission, um, you know, we all remember, well, I'm old, I remember, maybe the rest of you don't, when the city absorbed, basically St. Monica's couldn't afford to continue to maintain the cemetery, they came to the city and they said, look, will you accept the, um, responsibility for the cemetery? And with that along came $3,000, that has grown, it's now $5,500, which, you know, respectfully is a pittance when you talk about what our cemetery budget, budget is. So what I'd like to see Carol do is actually, um, either working through the diocese or someone, get that $5,500 and just roll it into the cemetery general fund. I mean, there's no reason.
Which makes perfect sense.
To have St. Monica's stand on its, you know, we've got to account for, we got to maintain, you know, its work. And we accept that St. Monica's is the responsibility of the city of Berry. That was accepted. So there's really no reason.
No.
To have a separate fund. It's all cemetery, general fund, perpetual care money, and we care for St. Monica Cemetery just as we do Elmwood, Hope, or any other cemetery. So, um, if there's no objection, I'm sure there'll be something we'll have to do at a later date, but I, I think Carol should pursue getting those funds folded in. And then, um, so we, so in the cemetery, we have currently 120,000 that has kind of no restrictions at all, right? It's just kind of cemetery general fund.
Correct.
Money, okay, I wanted to make sure.
And from, out of that, just the, and I, I listed them on the cemetery pages.
Yeah.
We do an annual, um, allocation of 25,000 out of the cemetery general fund into our general fund to help support the operations costs.
Right.
Of the cemeteries. Uh, we transfer a whopping $250 from the flower fund and 1,500 from the mausoleum fund. All of those go into the general fund to help offset the costs of operating the department, so.
Right, and then we currently have, um, through the, um, Russell Bequest.
Yeah.
We currently have 60,000 of, no, how many?
66, 65, 60.
66,000, 65,000, that really has no restrictions at all.
The only restriction being that it has to be for Hope.
Right.
So.
So we could technically roll that, I, I feel a little funny about that because Mr. Russell was kind enough to think of the city, so, and that's a conversation we had, and this is fairly recent.
Yeah.
That the city received this money. So it's a significant sum, so for now, I'd rather leave that sort of on its own, and what the Cemetery Commission has talked about, and what they're working on, um, Eugene Cozy's hope was that, um, a significant portion of that money, roughly a million dollars, would be used for a fountain at Hope Cemetery, a very significant fountain at Hope Cemetery. And so the Cemetery Commission has been working along those regards, and they've talked about somehow working the Russell funds into that as well to memorialize Mr. Russell. So we'll be hearing a lot, a lot more about that, they're doing some good work at the cemetery. And then, um, technically speaking, the Semperbonne annuity, there are no restrictions on that, correct?
None, none whatsoever. It comes in, and it comes in as a general fund allocation, so it actually could be used as general fund revenue, um, but the council quite a few years ago, uh, in. But the council quite a few years ago, in honor of Mr. Semperbonn, said, no, let's treat that more special. And so every year when we receive it in the general fund, that, the whole amount gets transferred into, we have a special account for it. And you can see in the, the accounting, several of the larger things that, you know, we did the digital sign. We did the, we did the exterior lighting project here on the building. We've done, we did the Capitol campaign for the Opera House. There are a number of, we did the, the Civic Center marketing project, the Enterprise Alley. So there's a number of things, Mathews and Playground matching a BGS grant. So we, and again, the council made a decision quite a while ago, back in 2013 and 2018, to make annual allocations out of that. We do $10,000 a year into the Bike Path Maintenance Fund. And we do $5,000 a year into the Tree Maintenance Fund. So that's helped us grow those four ongoing expenses associated with those two items.
But Mr. Semperbonn did, he left us a subtle message, which was, don't blow the money, the annuity money. So we've always been careful, we've always been careful to make sure it's kind of project based, that it's more a capital improvement than it is, you know, general operating fund, you know, operations. Okay, so I think that's. Oh, yes. Bern, did you have a question?
Hi, thanks. Is it possible that some of these funds that we use to take care of our dead can be used for taking care of our living with some of the stressors that we have? So that when there's something that comes up, I don't know, my, I'm just thinking of something like the porta potty or making a space for unhoused people to be in the park. So it's not just out in the middle of the park, or, you know, some kind of a small shelter, like out in Courier Park, or improving the care for the bike path we do have, so that when the kids are walking back and forth to school, it's wide enough so that they're not bumping into the bushes, which we know carry ticks. So just wondering, how can we utilize some of these funds for our very current and real challenges that, that we're facing for some of our residents? Thank you.
Bern, there, there certainly are things that some of the funds could be, there's enough flexibility in some of the funds, but not the cemetery funds. The cemetery funds are controlled by state law as to what they can be spent on, so.
But we have, you know, obviously, we have flexibility within the vast majority of the 3.2 million that sort of sits in the general fund. The vast majority of that is for capital improvements. I mean, roughly, roughly $3 million of that 3.2 could in fact be used for capital improvements, such as sidewalks, roads, streets. The only restricted funds are, of course, the Brucea Trust, which is still kind of broad because it just says, projects that benefit.
The poor children.
The poor children, unquote, of Berry City. So, I mean, technically, one could say, well, doesn't matter what your social status is or your economic status. You walk on the same sidewalk, so therefore, if we do a sidewalk with that many, it benefits you. We've never looked at it that way. We've, we've, we've tried to take a more narrow view of those funds. And then, of course, we have the opioid-related fund, which is $85,000. And, and that obviously has, you know, limited use.
Right, based on the.
Although limited but broad. I mean, you could, opioids unfortunately touch a lot of people and a lot of communities in a lot of different ways. So as long as you can make that direct connection to the opioid crisis, then you can spend the money.
We've used it for, in support of Turning Points Recovery Center project. We have $8,000 a year that we use to support the Fire and EMS Department in their interactions with, with people who are, are experiencing overdoses. And we've used it for other similar kinds of things that, that fall under the restrictions as are included in the opioid settlements.
Counselor Guston.
So can I ask you another question about that?
Sure.
So if there was some, another, like the People's Health and Wellness Clinic, or the people who are working on the homelessness task force, if they came up with some ideas, can, would they like come to the city council and say, can we get these funds from, like for the opioid settlement fund? Maybe the, I don't know what the clinic might need, but maybe they could use $3,000 for a part of a project. Is that something that a group would then come to the council and make a request for that? How do, how does a community access that money?
I would suggest that they come through me first, so that we can review the, the settlement criteria to see if they're, to make sure that their request falls into the criteria. And then we can craft a request to the council and bring it forward for their consideration, so.
Thanks, Carol. I appreciate that information.
Counselor Guston?
Thank you. I think my question is maybe a little bit in line with, with Bern's question just now. I think we have a couple of funds where we have to think about big strategic choices. You know, as Carol had suggested about the Semperbonn bequest fund, does it still make sense for its purpose? And obviously, the cemetery funds are restricted. But there are a couple of funds. I'm curious if Carol or anyone has a thought about us moving to sort of an annual drawdown for a sort of special projects or, or granting purpose? That instead of like, oh, when we remember it, it comes up every year at a certain time. We have $10,000 to allocate out of fill in the blank. And we could plan it for either an outside root-up application or sort of an, an interesting internal sort of strategic project that might move the city forward in ways that small doses of, of money could. And I also want to echo the mayor's statement earlier. I was reading that Italian Memorial Fund and thinking, boy, we could do, we could do cool things at Denty Park. But that's a lot of money just for maintaining the granite. So I'd love to see if we can expand that a little bit. I had a constituent pitch the idea of doing a rain garden in that corner as a very visible, possible improvement and, and cool project. So I didn't know if there's a thought about an annual drawdown strategy.
It's certainly something that we could look at. And this is, this is actually the first time that I've had the freedom to take a more holistic look at our funds. You know, as, as treasurer, but clerk at the same time, there isn't the time to devote to sort of digging into these sort of things. And, and now that, that I'm just working on the treasurer side of things, it gives me an opportunity to look at that. I, I think it would be great to look at what, what the opportunities are for utilizing and not just waiting for, for something, for somebody to raise their hand and say, hey, isn't there a fund that does this? Maybe look at those more carefully.
And then, you know, the other thing that's not lost on me is that Mr. Semperbonn was smart enough to invest a substantial sum of money in the annuity. So that, so that annuity, if the city of Berry said, and currently, the annuity is managed by.
Vermont Community Foundation.
Yeah. If we went to the Vermont Community Foundation and said, look, this is our annuity. We'd like it all, please. They'd say, no, it doesn't work that way. It's an annuity. I mean, I suspect, given the run-up in the Dow Jones Industrial Average, I suspect we'll probably see a pretty significant check this year. But my point is, he was smart enough to not give us access to that. Because every year, we get a significant sum of money and then we can, in perpetuity. So even when we look at, even when we look at the Cozy Funds, and obviously, you know, I have multiple roles there. What's important to me is that we not blow it, that we, that we just make it meaningful, that we remember people. Because what, what I think we have to remember is that Mr. Cozy thought enough of the city of Berry and Hope Cemetery to leave us everything. And I think other people are probably watching. And so we could have, there could be other potential benefactors out there. And if we're not smart with the money, if we don't use it in a meaningful way, I wouldn't blame anyone a bit if they said, well, I'm changing my will. And there are probably people out there right now who have left the city a significant sum of money. So that's why, to me, it's just really important that we do a good job with it.
One of the, one of the projects that was funded through the Semperbonn bequest fund were a series of granite pieces, that most of them are out in the public, though we do have the little Isaac Berry statue here in, in City Hall. And that, that is one of the few projects that's still ongoing. There's one more piece that's being done that Giuliano Cecanelli is working on, a piece that will honor Mr. Semperbonn. And it's like the last one, the last of the things to be funded. So I'm looking forward to seeing, gives me goosebumps when I mention it.
Well, the smaller cemetery funds, is there any latitude there with the perpetual care funds? You know, we've got the mausoleum maintenance, we've got the flowers. Is there any, I mean, obviously, they're restricted, and I don't have an issue with that. But can you have just one restricted fund? I mean, we, we understand our obligations with the mausoleum. And we do that. But is there any, just to consolidate some of the, you know, there's two funds that just aren't that big.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'd have to do some research on whether they could be, whether they could be consolidated.
Yeah, I'd just be interested to know that because, you know, like you were saying in the very beginning, every year, you have to transfer the money and make sure, you know, and someone has to account for these things. And to the extent we can consolidate them while honoring the spirit behind the fund, if we can consolidate them, it makes for less work.
Yeah.
And I'm really interested that, it's interesting to me, I guess you're going to be down at the Moutua at Apostrophe sometime, because it's really interesting to me that, that there's no, there's no document with the Italian American Memorial.
Who knows? There may be something back in the.
But maybe, you know.
If I even knew a, a timeframe, that would give me a better, you know, maybe I could look through the city records and see. But I don't, I don't even know when, when the memorial was put up and when the.
Oh, I mean, I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you the year, but I remember when.
Yes, right. Our historian, she'll find it for us.
She's on the.
Do you know, Counselor Guston?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I should be able to find out pretty quickly, Carol.
All right. No, that would be, that would be cool, because it would be interesting, there's got to be some documentation somewhere about, you know, the folks at the Moutua giving the city this check and saying, oh, by the way, here's some money to maintain the memorial. And if there isn't a document somewhere, maybe there should be. Just so that we have an understanding of what the city's, I mean, we know what our obligations are. But as I said, when we had the discussion at the Cemetery Committee, we looked at it and said, well, you know, holy cow, there's, there's $31,000 there. And that's actually, even when we invest it, it, it doesn't need to be cleaned every year. It needs to be cleaned every other year.
And it's only like 900 bucks to clean it. So $31,000 is going to get a lot of cleanings, and it's going to keep making money, so.
And maybe there's something, again, that money was given to the city. But I'd certainly, if the Moutua said, well, how about if you take $10,000 of the money, of this money and do this with it to honor Italian Americans? And then. I'd sure be willing to listen. So good work. Kind of little detective work on your part.
We can do that. We can do that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Carol? Yes?
I have a comment. I've been thinking about what you said about motivating people to give money, to leave money to the city. And I agree with you that it needs to be used carefully. But I also think that it needs to be used. Because when it just sits, I mean, I've, I've done this kind of stuff with churches. When the, when the money just sits in the memorial fund and nothing happens, people also say, well, why would I, why would I give it? We'll just end up in a fund with my name on it. So I think it needs to be used. And maybe we need to do some creative thinking about some really good new ways to prioritize funds that we, that have some flexibility around them.
I, I will say that, you know, the mayor mentioned that it's, it's a little over $6 million. Most of that is brand new. So we have, we have been using the money that we've had access to, you know, and had. With the exception of the, the $600,000 balance that's left in the, in the Semperbonn bequest fund, we really have been using the other funds as they become available to us.
That's the pot I'm looking at.
Well, one interesting question that came up, because now with interest rates back up, you know, 4% or 5% range finally, instead of half a percent. You know, the money that, obviously, the money that is allocated to Hope Cemetery, about $3 million bucks, is going to generate, give or take, 120,000 a year in interest income. And the Cemetery Commission was asking, where does that money go? Does it go to the general fund, or does it stay with Hope Cemetery? And I didn't have an answer for them.
We had, we had talked at the Cemetery Committee meeting that while we, while the, the Cozy bequests are very specific. The Hope Cemetery bequest is very specific. The Capitol's bequest is very specific. But that it made sense that money that's earned by that restricted money could be a little freer in its use if it was still within the world of whatever it was being used for. So as an example, we've got the 3 million that is the Hope Cemetery money. And as the mayor said, it'll probably earn at least $150,000 this year. If that money was used on cemetery-related things, and not necessarily just Hope, but on cemetery-related stuff, we talked about the $40,000 for the, for the cemetery software program that is so desperately needed that we're in the process of, of getting set up. The $75,000 to assist with the, the operations of the cemetery, of the Cemeteries and Parks Department. That it made sense that, that the earnings could help with those other things that still fall into the category of cemeteries, but, but don't have to be restricted just to Hope. As long as we're being respectful of the bequest for Hope.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Carol, as always, for the education. And we will move on to the CDBGDR applications update.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have a brief update for the council tonight on the status of the CDBGDR applications. Just going to go through these quickly. These were, these slides were included in the presentation two weeks ago. Just the background on the program, 67 million coming into the state primarily. It related to disaster, recovery from the 2023 floods. So 2023 floods, not 2024. And a, a big chunk of that 54 million has to support Washington County primarily, and a section of Lemoyle County. The first round of applications are due September 30th. That's for the full applications. And there'd be a decision on November 20th. And the state has also indicated that there'd be a second round of an application deadline. And that would be December 18th with decisions on February 19th. But we, we are, we are, we are going to be, unless we're advised differently, we're going to be submitting everything on September 30th, because there's no guarantee of how much money would be left for that second round. Pre-applications were due and submitted on Tuesday, August 5th. And then, just as part of the requirements of this grant, funds must be spent, projects must be completed six years after the award. And that six-year clock has started ticking as soon as the state got approval for its plan for this funding. So we and the councils discussed these applications that I'm going to summarize for you at several meetings, including when we went over the pre-applications on August 5th. So what I'm showing you today is, this is a, almost an identical summary of the, of the pre-application from the August 5th meeting. I've marked it up based on feedback we've gotten from the state as we shared the pre-application process. Had a couple of purposes, and some of those were to allow the state to know what was out there. And also to advise applicants on how to make their applications more competitive. So I am showing you edits to what we're working on, based on feedback we received from, from folks at the state. So this is the housing-related applications. The state didn't make any suggestions related to the 143 North Main Street project or Prospect Heights. They did ask us to scale. They did ask us to scale back the North End Gateway project, want to scale it down to 10 million total. They advised that we not include the daycare grocery store components in this application. They don't believe that it's, it's consistent with the intent of the grant and the purposes and uses of the grant. And they also, for similar reasons, asked us to scale out the recreation, the building of recreation area components. We're still, we can still sort of build Flood Plain, the recreation components would have to be done separately. This is just to give you a visual of the North End Gateway concept at this, at this moment. I know it's a little bit tougher one to visualize, so this hopefully will help a little bit. We would, you know, we're looking at a, you know, a mid-rise building in that green parcel, not all of it, only really the Wabi Park section, a lot of that parcel also includes a public safety building. So it's a little misleading how big it is, but the mid-rise would be going sort of in the, the upper part of that green parcel there. We would be proposing to do seven property buyouts, and that would be buyouts with no redevelopment, so basically FEMA-type buyouts, and that would be to build Flood Plain right along Route 302. And then we are looking, we would look to do seven acquisitions, and the wording here is very important, and acquisition's different from a buyout, and acquisition allows us to do redevelopment, and so that would be included in those yellow properties that you see highlighted on the map. And then we would be looking to do seven elevations on the blue properties. These are all, the properties that are highlighted here are all properties and property owners that have come to the city and requested actions on their house in one way or the other, right? So, so for example, 14 and 18 Third Street, both of those property owners actually requested buyouts. The city didn't approve their buyouts, because we, we didn't, we only approved buyouts in clusters by the rivers or the landslides. But there, you know, that's, those two parcels together could be really conducive to an acquisition and redevelopment of, of one or two multifamily dwellings, right? So, so they, those, we didn't pick these property owners out of thin air, they, they have all expressed some sort of interest in some sort of action on their house or their property. The reason there's a, you can see the cluster on Second Street that we've talked about in the past as a possible site for a larger building, we've sort of split that into, with having an elevation in the middle, because that 22 Second Street has, we think has some issues on the land, the land is owned by Down Street, the building's owned by the property owner, so we think there may be issues with an acquisition there. To avoid those, we're, we're basically planning to do an elevation there, so we don't have to go through an acquisition and, you know, a different landowner than property owner. We are going to be reaching out to all the other property owners that are in this quadrant, and to ask them to see if they are interested in either an elevation or an acquisition. And that is, that'll be certainly, like everything, these are all at the, you know, the owner's discretion, we don't pressure or compel anyone to do anything they don't want to do with their property, but there may be people who, you know, now that they, now that they know that we're able to offer more than a, the low-ball offers that we were able to make before, they may be more interested in an acquisition or perhaps in an elevation. So we will be reaching out to all of those property owners in this quadrant to give them the opportunity. There will not be a lot of time allowed to respond, we obviously have tight deadlines, as I mentioned, with the September applications looming, we have to have a public hearing on the 23rd, I believe, what will be scheduled to coincide with the council meeting. So there's not a lot of time for people to make really big decisions, but that's just the nature of, of what we're dealing with. So this, this slide here was just to give you sort of a visual idea of what we're talking about. This is a summary of the infrastructure.
I wanted to make one point, I'm sorry. You know, the manager, this wouldn't be the first time that those property owners, when we talk about the tight timeframe, this wouldn't be the first time that those property owners in the North End have heard from the manager immediately after the flooding, when the buyouts were available, the manager's office contacted, and granted, it wasn't, you know, telephone contact necessarily, but we reached out to every single one of the property owners. So we're just letting them know, or the manager's letting them know, there's a second bite at the apple, if you want to, if you wanted to take a bite.
Correct.
Thank you. Amy, did you have a question?
Just a suggestion, if this is going to be a graphic that's in the grant application, in case the reviewers aren't familiar with this area, it might be helpful to also include, even though they're not part of the proposal for the money here, that there are buyouts along the river there, because like Scampini Square shows up in the bottom of that, so that you don't have a reviewer who looks at that and says, well, why aren't they doing anything right by the river? Because there is things you're doing in Scampini, so if you could fit it on that graphic, it might help somebody know, like, oh, they are doing things along the river too, but that's, there's more buyouts happening.
Thanks, Amy, good suggestion. On this slide, this is a slide of the infrastructure project pre-applications. On the first one, the stormwater upgrades, so if you recall, this was, the idea with this project was to, we've commissioned a hydrology and stormwater study, the idea was to take the results of those studies and basically fund and be able to do the highest-ranking, highest-priority, highest-impact projects from those studies, and we had requested $5 million to do that. The state has advised that, they don't believe that would be competitive, because we can't identify the projects, we've told them this is a chicken and egg, we're, you know, almost being punished for doing this the right way, because we could have, we could have just listed 30 pipe culverts to update. But we didn't, and, you know, so we, they've asked us to change this to a planning grant, the 1 million sort of a placeholder at this moment, as I talk to people to get an idea of what might be a realistic number, but the idea would be that the, the planning grant would fund sort of the design and the, and the engineering of these projects that come out of this hydrology and stormwater review. So we've pushed back on this, but it's pretty clear that if we, I think, if we don't sort of modify it in the way that we've been advised to modify it, that we'd get nothing. So we, I think, try to get something out of it, hopefully. They, the state was pretty clear with us that the odd would not receive consideration. I think they, probably a lot of reasons for it, one is it's, it's not housing-related. We explained that this is a regional shelter that unfortunately, we've had to activate every year that I've been manager, but they obviously have a lot of, a lot of priorities, and I think this is probably just a victim of, of too many applications.
Just as an aside, $160 million in applications have been submitted, so it's that competitive.
The Potash Brook, similar issue to the stormwater upgrades, just because it's not sort of shovel-ready and no design ready for it, they suggested changing this to a planning grant, so basically, the grant would fund the design engineering instead of the whole, the whole project itself. They love Willie Street and Harrington Ave, so those are staying as-is. And then they didn't like any of our planning grants, so they've, they've asked us to, you know, they, they, they've not so subtly said, you might not want to do those, so. So when we, you know, going, so the high-level summary, you know, we started with over $40 million in applications, based on the feedback from the state, we're, we're down to 20, almost 25 million, and still a significant chunk of money. But, you know, I think, certainly, you know, certainly don't like to see projects going off, but I also appreciate the state's candid and frank feedback, because we also don't want to be spending time on things that aren't going to get funded. So I think it's, it's been a good, good conversations, they're very, they've been very frank on both ends, but I think frank is good, and, and we're still, you know, I think we would still, if, I think if we walked away with, with what they've, with, you know, with, with all these projects, as they've described them, I think we would all be pretty happy with that, with that outcome. So that's the update, we continue to work. You know, we have a really good team working on this, Josh Jerome is from BADC, is on every call, Jim Lovinsky, who we've hired to do the grant writing, Pat Moulton is helping us as well, and so we, Janet, Janet's been unfortunately looped into some more of this as we get into the weeds of some of the grant rules and such, so we are, you know, continuing to plug away. The next step at the council level will be, as I mentioned, the public hearing on September 23rd, which will coincide with the, with a scheduled council meeting, and we will have a public notice that's required to be printed in the paper well, I think, the week before that. So the, you know, we're working on all these, all these, all these steps to, to get to September 30th application.
And do agree, they're working incredibly hard on all of these things. I mean, couldn't, couldn't be more proud and thankful of the team that's putting these together. They are a lot of work, I help where I can, probably not as often as I should, but they're getting it done, yes.
Question about, I know you said that we're applying for first round, because we weren't sure if there would be any money left for second round. If there, if there is some, by some chance there is, would we apply for second round as well?
Yeah, I certainly think so, I mean, it depends on how, what we do in the first round, you know, if we're, if we're all of a sudden, you know, if our three housing projects are funded, that'll keep us plenty busy for a while. So I think it depends on how we do, but certainly if there's money available, and the fact that we're, you know, the, the grant is really designed for places like Berry, you know, so much of the money has to come to Washington County and Berry, in particular with the impact we had, so I think it would be foolish to leave any money on the table, but, you know, if we walked away with everything that they funded, if they funded everything that's on that summary slide now, maybe we'd stay out of a second round, but if there's things that didn't get funded, maybe a Willie Street or something, we would certainly, I think, want to go back for it. Yeah.
Any other questions, Council? Okay, thank you very much. So we'll, we'll keep you in the loop as we move through this stuff. We've got, like I said, a lot of people helping out, and we appreciate it, with technical expertise, and we certainly appreciate them as well. So item, Council will move on to item AE on the agenda, this is a discussion that I wanted to have, and I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, and I'll just sort of set the table, you know, for quite a while, I mean, as mayor, and certainly as councilors, you know, you see everything, I think sometimes you have a heightened sense of awareness. You see everything. I would always joke with people that it was nice when I stepped down after my first term as mayor, terms as mayor, because I stopped seeing every piece of garbage on the sidewalk. And then when I was re-elected, I started seeing every piece, you know, you see the problems. So, and I certainly see the problems with drug use, I see the problems with quality of life crimes. Honestly, I'm getting more and more frustrated. Last week, there was an incident at Green Acres. Councilor Deering has been talking to me for quite a number of months about some alleged activities that are occurring at apartments there. Police officers were dispatched, a, an apartment was searched, drugs were found, one person is, I believe she is being held on $50,000 bail, and I think, I think she's up in, I'm not sure which correctional facility, but she was charged. The, our police officers cited the occupants of the apartment, the tenants of the apartment, with dispensing from a dwelling. So they were charged, and because I had been watching and talking to Councilor Deering about these incidents, and others who live at Green Acres, who live in public housing, and talking to them about their frustration, I wanted, I was going to go to the arraignment. I had contacted Berry Housing Authority, I'd let their executive director know that I was demanding an eviction. I respect the process, but if these, when these folks were convicted, I let her know that I was not asking for an eviction, I was demanding it. She was very sympathetic, Jamie and I work well together, she's a good person who works hard, her whole staff does, so she, but she understood the level of frustration. Unfortunately, the, and I'm not indicting anyone, I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just, I'm just telling you what happened. The Washington County State Attorney decided not to charge the individuals for dispensing from a dwelling due to lack of evidence, and so that's where we are. But I literally have, you know, video recording after video, you know, the traffic, the cars, the individuals, some, and some, you know, in varying levels of intoxication, and it's getting frustrating. You know, we all feel it, and when I talk, again, I'm not blaming or indicting anyone, but when I talked to the state's attorney, she, she agreed that we have, she called it a rough patch, we have hit a real rough patch. And I'm at, I'm just at the point where we really have to find some solutions. I'm not saying we're going to fix the entire problem, but you know, people who, good decent people who live in public housing, just like all of us, you know, we, we wouldn't want that in our neighborhoods, we wouldn't want that for our kids, and I don't want that for them. And so, you know, I guess I'm, I'm just starting the conversation, what can we do? Does anyone have any ideas? I think prosecution is certainly one of my answers, that people need to be held accountable. You know, this revolving door that we have within our justice system just doesn't seem to be working. And believe me, if somebody is addicted, I want to see them get help. I mean, I am probably one of the biggest fans of, you know, the court system, when they actually put people, people through a system that works. You know, I'm one of their biggest fans. But right now, I feel like, I feel like we're not doing, I feel like I'm not doing enough, I feel like we're not doing enough, and, and most importantly, and the biggest source of my frustration, I feel like I'm losing. That, you know, every day, it's a battle out there, and I feel like every day, we're losing a little bit, and a little bit, and a little bit more ground. That's how I feel. Anyone?
Can I just point out?
Yes.
This is not a rough patch. This is not a temporary situation, it is aggravated, it's becoming worse, month after month, year after year. So I think the state needs to take a different tone with this situation, because the victims are also everybody who's in the community, who have to live with it. I have neighbors who are afraid. These people carry guns, every time, there's an arrest, there's drugs, and there's guns.
I, I don't disagree, but I think, I think to simply point at the state and say, well, okay, fix it.
Isn't.
I, I, believe me, I wish I could, I have great working relationships with every, every single department within the administration. You know, when I call, they take the call, because I don't just call and yell at them. You know, I call looking for a partner, I call looking for help. You know, they're just as frustrated as we are, and I'm not sure what more programs are going to do. Yes?
I think the thing, there's a couple of things that come to mind, and one is that I agree that we need to take, we need to take it very seriously when people are breaking the law, and at the same time, I have a lot of empathy, and I think that people who have, I'm not making excuses, I'm saying people who have a lot of trauma, maybe living in poverty, maybe, whatever it might be their experience, they're probably using drugs to numb themselves from having to think about the fact that they've had, you know, whatever life that they've had. And that's unfortunate, and we're all having to deal with it. The thing that I, the other thing I want to say is, I think we have to be really careful, because I think a lot of people see people hanging out in the park and make a lot of assumptions, and I think we have to be very careful with people who are unhoused, and people who are, like, lumping everybody together, because there, there are a lot of people who are maybe addicted to substances and are unhoused, and there are probably people who are addicted to substances and go home to a house every night. So I think we have to just be very careful. I think, to your point, I think it is a bigger problem, and I, I mean, I'm reading in the paper about Burlington and what they're trying to do to solve the problems, Montpelier's having issues with encampments for, and, and things becoming more violent and disruptive. And so I think that it is a bigger issue, and I think the main point I wanted to make was, we're not going to fix this overnight, because it didn't happen overnight. It's going to take us as long to fix it as it did to get to this point. And, and honestly, I think part of the problem is that we are, we continue to short-change our students and our children, we continue to short-change people who have needs, we don't have enough housing, we don't have enough beds for people who are mentally ill, we don't have enough beds for people who are addicted to substances. So how do we help when we don't have enough to do that? And I think this is a bigger issue. I think there is things that we can do, I, I hope there are things that we can do, but at the same time, sometimes it does feel like it's bigger than us, and how, I mean, one. sometimes it does feel like it's bigger than us. And how, I mean, one of the things that I I continue to push for is how can we work together with, you know, the People's Health and Wellness Clinic, the Unhoused Community Committee? How can we work with local churches and nonprofits to make sure that we're all pushing in the same direction and we're really clear on what our ask is, whatever that might be from the state level? If we could all get on the same page, if we could all sit down and have, you know, a big stakeholder meeting and say, this is what Barry needs. We need X, Y, and Z. And it's, you know, it's probably not going to be easy. And, you know, it's going to cost a bazillion dollars. But the reality is, is that we unless we're all pushing in the same direction and know what we need here in Barry, I feel like we're just going to keep spinning our wheels.
Yes. Would you mind coming up to the mic when you speak? Because otherwise people can't hear you.
People online can't hear you.
Oh, really?
Thank you.
I don't know, I'm kind of loud. I'd like to understand why we don't have such a few penalties for dealers. I am not angry at users because I understand trauma. I come from trauma myself. So I think we can all experience degrees of trauma in our lives. In any case, I want to see the dealers go away. There are so many drug houses in Barry. There's one on my street. I'm tired of it. I get to see the traffic day and night. I work for a living. Why are there people passing at three o'clock, four o'clock, five and six and seven o'clock in the morning? They're so motivated. Why don't they get a real job? Because they're making a lot of money and they're carrying guns. This is what I want taken care of. I don't want to have to worry about going home at night or walking out in the street or walking downtown. Sorry, that I'm just fed up.
Counselor Augustine?
Thank you. I'm just reviewing and reflecting on our earlier conversation about the fund balances. And I'm referring back to the memo that stated that we still have a remaining roughly $84,000 in fund balance in our opioid settlement uses and that we do expect the settlement payouts from that to continue going forward. So I for one would be interested in hearing from the city manager, from our chief, and from our organizations, our partner organizations that we work with in town. We just allocated $20,000 to Turning Point tonight. I'd be interested in some pitches for that funding to help address some of this. This is not to for a second not acknowledge that there are much, much bigger systemic problems. But I do think we have a small fund of money that we can put towards some some initial steps. And I would be interested in hearing proposals on that.
Counselor Deering?
Somebody who lives and deals with this every single day, who my children can't play outside because of the activity that's constantly going on in public housing. What I say is I say that we let people know that Barry isn't in for business anymore, that we invest some of this money into investigations, into charges that actually stick so we can hold the dealers accountable. Because when people get charged with dealing drugs and then charges are dismissed, and there's no eviction process then, because while the charges don't stick, there's not enough officers to do the work as it is. When you call in a complaint, a lot of times, there are other things that are more important. And I understand that. So we need to make it so that people understand that if you come to Barry, whether it's driving your car, taking an Uber, walking or a bike, Barry's not for business, that you will go to jail and that there will be consequences for those actions. And the people that then also house these out of state drug dealers need to be also held accountable. We instilled laws 10 or 15 years ago for people that are housing people out of state selling drugs. Yet we really don't see those charges happening often. And if it's because of a lack of evidence, we need to put some money into those investigations so that they can then do their jobs. It's it's heart wrenching. And I'm somebody who can speak out about the things that are going on in our community. But there are a lot of vulnerable people in our community who can't. And this isn't about an unhoused community. This is about a drug epidemic, drug dealers and drug users seeking the drugs because they're everywhere. You can get drugs anywhere easier than you can get tobacco. You can't really go to the store and buy tobacco if you're a kid. But you can go to the drug dealer and get your bag of heroin or something like that. The penalties haven't been stiff enough. And we just don't have the manpower to do it. I'm frustrated. I have talked to so many different people on so many different levels. And like you said, Counselor Spalding, we need to get a Congress of people together, a bunch of stakeholders that can get something done and craft policies and make things happen. Because when we don't have everybody coming to the table, people like the directors of Barry Housing, Chip is a former director, I've had conversations with him, I've had conversations with Jamie, had conversations with so many people. And it's always, well, it's this person and that agency or this organization, the courts or this. So we need to get everybody on it on the same page like you're talking about with how can we get on the same page and move things in the right direction? Because we're at a turning point that one of our community members, one of our good community members is going to shoot somebody, is going to stab somebody, is going to do something in their own self defense. And then we're going to look back as a community, as leaders in our community and say, well, what do we do to prevent those people from doing what they did because they didn't feel safe anymore? And that's what we're having. Community members that don't feel safe. I carry a firearm often because I don't feel safe. That when people who aren't allowed to be carrying guns are, I don't even know what to say.
Amy Galford?
I just wondered, and this may not, this may be something that either you guys can't answer or shouldn't be answered in a public forum. But I wonder if our police and emergency responders have what they need in terms of working with other local municipalities? Because if you're kind of playing whack a mole of the problem moving around, you know, or it may be people are living in one community, they're dealing in another, and the person who's overdosing and dying isn't a third, that kind of thing. And then, of course, we have people coming out of state and that sort of thing. So I just wonder, you know, in terms of things that can be done, just is there something regionally? Because, you know, in other states, a community the size and the population of Barry would be a neighborhood in another municipality, you know, not trying to take on something as daunting as interstate drug trafficking. So I just, I wonder if there's anything that can be done for municipalities to work together because it's not specific to Barry City.
Thank you. Yes, Chapel.
Chip Castle.
Oh, you need to come up here. We don't pick you up.
Oh, sorry. Chip Castle, I was a former director of the Housing Authority for 16 years. I agree with you, Tom. It's come to a point that it's been getting more and more and more serious every year. That's why old guys quit being Housing Authority directors because you don't want to get beat on the head at two in the morning when you're up there trying to find out what's wrong. I think there are some legislative things that could be done. For example, North Berry Manor is 120 units. Tenant, my tenant that lives in 203 has visitors from Springfield, Mass. coming up here, you know, every other week. And they stay for five minutes and they're gone. And I can't, I, as a Housing Authority Director, I can't tell that guy he can't go to North Berry Manor. You know, even though I'm responsible for the North Berry Manor, because he could be going to visit somebody else or whatever. So there's, the frustration is the police can give a no trespass order. And while all the years that they were giving them out, they were telling me, Susan, it doesn't do anything. You know, they they don't, they have the right to go wherever they want, to visit whoever they want. So there are some legislative things. Before I left, I, one of the biggest projects I did was a $750,000 camera system. I mean, in every property, all seven properties the Housing Authority manages, we can tell where they came in and we can follow them through the whole building now. And I've talked to a lot of the police. And so that was one of the better things you did. There are things we can do. But as Bill Clinton would say, I share your pain. I feel your pain because I was there too. So I'd be willing to to help if you were going to have some committees or something just from the experience that I have. But it really is a horrible state, a horrible state. You know, would I would I want my grandmother to live in some of these properties? It's frightening.
So if you look at where most municipalities are, they're cracking down. You know, you can be, you can have empathy for people, but be fed up. And that's where I am. Every single person, the chief sat right here. And I asked him, are people offered help? When you arrest people on drug charges, do you offer them help? And he said, yes. And I said, how many people have taken you up on it? None. That's where my empathy stops. We all make choices in life. And if they want to make that choice, I'm going to make their life very uncomfortable. And it's going to start with enforcement. And if that means that we have to find additional officers, if we have to reinstate the bees so they're driving around and they're up at Green Acres, up at High Gates and in different neighborhoods, then that's what we have to do. But, you know, more and more, and Nicholas, you've said it best several times, we govern for 8,000 people. That's who we govern for. Those are our citizens. And the majority of them are law abiding, good people, and they're scared. They don't even want to walk in a parking lot, you know, in a well lit parking lot at a supermarket at night. And like I said, I'm sounding a little frustrated and I'm trying not to. Because I'm not as, when I'm frustrated, I know I am not as effective. I get emotional about things and I get angry. And when I get angry, I'm not effective. So I'll calm down about it. But, you know, something's got to give. And even some of the folks who are providing meals and providing assistance, they're providing that assistance of someone who is on drugs and they know they're on drugs and they know they're under the influence. And they're not making sure they get help. And at a certain point, where do you look at someone and say, look, if you're going to come here under the influence of heroin, I'm not giving you a meal? You can you can respect what what they're doing enough to at least try to stay sober for 15 minutes in the morning. And instead, I mean, we had an incident, thanks Vinnie Calcany, by the way, when, you know, someone was served a bunch of chocolate donuts. That was what, 10 days ago? We, I think before you went on vacation.
Before I went, yeah.
Smear it all over the youth triumphant first thing in the morning. Thankfully, Vinnie Calcany, great guy, you know, someone sent a picture to Vinnie, he came down and cleaned it up. But it's that type of stuff that just frustrates the heck out of me. Where you say, you know, we're doing our best to try to help you as much as we can. And and you respond with vandalism simply for the sake of vandalism. You're, you know, we have trash cans throughout the city. Want to get high? Pick up your needles. You don't. You just leave them littered around. I am frustrated. And I am at the point where I'm willing to do something about it. So I don't know where we go with this. Yes, ma'am? You have to, or we don't hear you.
I think the drugs we're dealing with today are not like the drugs from before. I see what people look like driving around downtown. And they are in the strangest positions, passed out face down or off to their side. They just, it doesn't look like the heroin I saw growing up. This is that fentanyl that's going around. And I sound like my parents now. But it's just, it's not something I think that can be reasoned with. That's why I understand the empathetic part. But we do need stronger legislation to hold people accountable. I am not after the people who are the end users. I am after the middle and the top. How do we get those people out of our communities? Because they are holding us hostage here.
How do we get them out of our communities?
How do we get them out of our communities?
They're not in our communities. No, they're smarter.
Oh, I know.
They're not, they send 16 year olds, 14 year olds. They're smarter than that. How do you, how do you, how do you get the drugs out of your community? Make it really uncomfortable to deal drugs. I mean, I've honestly thought about having the city buy a van that says police on the side of it, on both sides of it, with cameras like the Google thing, and park that at different places around the city. And make it as uncomfortable as we can for people to do drugs in the city or to deal drugs. Because that's not good for anyone. Yes?
Burlington has a similar setup like that in several of their parking lots that a bunch of cameras and it's blue lights. And people are very aware that that's a police setup. I've seen them in a lot of areas. They're mobile. We talked about it a couple years ago. But we definitely didn't have any funding for that. So, you know, maybe that's something to look into. I mean, I don't know. But I know that for me, when I got clean 12 years ago from an opiate addiction, it was important. It was life changing. But I had to make that choice every single step of the way. And again, when I used, I had to make a choice every single step of the way between getting money, going to my dealer, doing the drugs even after I bought them. We make choices every single day. I make a choice every day to get up at 5:00, go to work at 6:00. I make those choices. And when we make choices that are disparaging to our community, and there are no consequences for them, that's when people have felt that, well, we kind of do whatever we want. And I empathize, I sympathize, I understand because I've been on that other side of the demon. I face it on a daily basis. But thankfully, I'm on this side of it and I can tell about it. And we can be on the better side. But at what point do we stop enabling our community or really stop enabling others to spew this garbage into our community, turning people's demons against them? It's just, it's not, it's not good.
So, anyone else? Yes, Fern Rhodes?
Hi, thank you. I appreciate this conversation. And I also appreciate separating people living in our community who have different kinds of addictions from the people that are being the drug dealers. And I think that your focus on drug dealers is a really viable thing to look at. When, when you talk about choices that people make, one of the things that comes to mind is an elderly friend that lives here in town and who for 45 years lived in an abusive marriage. You think, well, why didn't she leave? Why didn't she walk out? The trauma of her life was such that it took, I don't know what it took for her to finally step out of that place. And this is a very devout person, a person who cares, a great mom, a person who worked hard. And so I'd like to, I think about people who have fallen into addiction, sort of in that battered person kind of syndrome where you don't see the way out until something happens that gets you into a new place. And Michael, thank you for sharing, Counselor Deering. You know, maybe you'd share what happened in your life that made you wake up. And so keeping people as safe as we can and reminding them that they're a part of a community. And, you know, we're talking about three or four different groups of people. Here we have people who are unhoused for no reason of their own, but they're being grouped in frequently with people who are using drugs. And then we have people who are using drugs. We have people who are dealing drugs. So there's all these different communities of people. And I think it's really important for us when we are, like you said, mayor, when we get frustrated and we get angry, it's harder to think and harder to to communicate and share. So if we can step back, come to some of these group work things, the harm reduction workshops that were just offered in Barry and Montpelier, I think anyone here would have found that enlightening and informative and helpful. It was helpful to me. I learned a lot attending one of those. So maybe having those kinds of educational forums for people in the community, how can we take care of ourselves? How can we help take care of others? How can we make sure that our most vulnerable people who are already some living on the edge or outside of there, that they have support so we don't lose them into the system? And how do we continue to support our children and give our children what they need so they don't fall into that place of becoming prey for the predators? It's incumbent upon all of us to work together. And I thank you for your endeavors and for your deep And I thank you for your endeavors and for your deep consideration of this very troubling time. And a time when our country is actually removing the supports. We had to ask the state to help us to make sure that the outreach person was funded. Our state also needs to step up to the plate and not just ask Berry to take care of all the people from our community, but for us to be able to work with other cities and our state and then our federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I have a couple of things to, to add. Thank you, Bern, for reminding us about supporting one another as community members. And part of that support, I think, is that, I mean, many, many people do seem to feel completely alienated. I mean, I'm, I'm, I get the frustration. I get the anger with the dealers. I understand that. I appreciate hearing about the, the empathy for the end-users. But I think that one of the things, well, a number of years ago, there was a psychological study done with rats. And they put rats in individual cages and they gave them water, you know, two water bottles, and one of them had opiates in it and the other one didn't. And the rats who were in the little individual cages all, all drank the opiates. They, they, you know, that's what they did. Then they put the, the same rats in a big shared cage with lots and lots of interesting things for rats, rats enrichment stuff, mazes and toys and, you know, treats and stuff. And they put out the waters, the same thing, the water with opiates and the water without. And the, most of the rats tried the opiates, and they went back to the regular water and went back to playing with their friends in the mazes. And in a way, what that says to me is that, that if we can convince people that they are members of our community, if we can stop setting up a dynamic that says, you're not part of our community because you don't, you know, you don't have a home or you don't look like you belong here or because, you know, you're hanging out in the park and I don't understand what you're doing or because you're rude to, you know? If we can make those efforts to include people and, and make them understand that they are part of this and that the shared values of the community are something they actually have a stake in, we may see some change. I think we also need to come down harder on the people who are dealing drugs who aren't part of our community and who come up here and prey on the people who are feeling alienated and despairing enough to feel that they need the numbing effect of the drugs. So I, I see, I see some, I do see some enforcement issues, but I also see some engagement issues that we need to, to look at as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, you know, I'm quickly getting to the point where if you are service-resistant for any reason, if all you want to do is use and you will not accept help, I'll have nothing for you. I will not have empathy for you. I will not have services for you. I'll have nothing for you. Anyone who wants help, like I said before, I am the biggest fan of the Drug Court. And I've gone down there to support people who have graduated and who have made the right choices. And when people make the wrong choices and we have to pay for it, and the other 8,000 people that we govern for have to pay for it, that's wrong. Make your poor choices somewhere else. And I understand, believe me, I understand addiction. It's hard. Sobriety is hard. When someone finally makes that choice to seek sobriety, they're going to fail five, six, 10, 12 times during the course, you know? And they're going to be an addict for the rest of their lives. But eventually, they will succeed.
The only thing I would add to that, I mean, I understand where you're coming from. The only thing I would add is that in order to get somebody to that place where they're able to accept help, where they're not simply responding to their disease, we have to make the connections with them that make them realize that we see them as a human being and not as a problem. And I really, I feel really strongly about that. I think when people turn down help, it's not always because they're making a bad choice or because, because they're consciously making a bad choice. It's because they don't believe us when we offer the help. And that's on us.
Yes, Counselor.
Just wanted to respond to Bern. She had asked, she's not on, but, you know, she asked, what made me turn to be, to sobriety? And it really was the thought about losing everything that was important to me, my wife, my children, the opportunity to be in their lives. So it's about when are we going to stop making the choices that are bad? If you speed, well, you break the law, that's wrong too. I mean, that could potentially get you in a wreck on the highway and kill you.
Or someone else.
Or someone else. And the same thing is going on with the drugs in our community that regardless of whether you're a user or a dealer, that if you're involved in this process, you're making those conscious decisions. And at some point, something in life has to make it so that you don't want to make those choices anymore. Unfortunately, sometimes those decisions can't be our own. And maybe incarceration is important or having an option for a rehab facility. I know that many of the people that I used to use with took opportunities to go to a rehab and had those opportunities. But it wasn't until that they lost everything that mattered to them was it that they were willing to change. And that's my success story.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Counsel, upcoming business. Obviously, we're going to be talking about this topic more and more and what resources we have, what resources we should be providing. Perhaps I'll ask our chief, Police Chief, and probably both because this impacts EMTs, our EMT services as well, just so we can kind of figure out what the impacts are. And also ask the State's Attorney to come in and perhaps talk to us a little bit about the difficulty of prosecution. You know, other than that, my focus is still on these DR grants and providing whatever, whatever support I can. They're working hard and I've been able to connect them with a few resources. But it's really important that, it's really important that these applications are done well. It's, it's incredibly competitive right now out there. We will, Counselor Spalding, be having, I'll get that, the long-term discussion about water and sewer raids in other municipalities. I, I will get that on the agenda as well. Is there anything else I'm missing? Anything?
Can't think of anything. I'm sure there's something on my board, but...
Anything you wanted to add, by the way, as long as I was going on a rant there?
Um, no, I mean, I, I think, I, I would just add that our, our police officers are, you know, they're, they're chasing this issue all around the city. They're, I think it's very frustrating for them to, to go through this. They, they put in a lot of, a lot of hard work under difficult, dangerous circumstances. And I think it's, it's, I think anyone would feel frustrated in their line of work if, if they were putting that type of effort and only saw the, you know, problem almost getting worse. So it's a frustration. I, you know, would, you know, certainly talk to Chief Vale. We've started with the ordinance that we enacted in July. And it's already been used a couple of times. But obviously, it's, it's not a substitute for, for eradicating dealers and, and the such. So I know that they're very, the officers are frustrated. They do hard work, and, and I think we can all imagine in our, in our lines of work how we would feel if we put in that kind of effort and, and didn't get the results. Yeah, so.
Can I just add that Berry City Police Department has been wonderful. They are responsive, they are courteous.
Yeah.
And even in the case of this adversity and the things that they see at the GIA, they are courteous and polite, all of them.
And I would, the only other piece I would add is we've, we've talked a little bit about it in the past. It just, it sort of gets a little bit backburnered now with the CDBGDR. But we, when we did talk about the, the ordinance in the summer, there, an initial draft included a nuisance property provision. We scrapped that because it needed a little bit more work. But the chief and I have been speaking about that more recently, especially in light of the Green Acres incident. We both happen to believe that Berry Housing Authority, ironically, would be one of the biggest offenders under a nuisance property ordinance. Like that would just be based on our, our police response. So that's another approach. We're obviously limited in what we can do. You know, that, somebody mentioned changes in state law, which is also probably a, something that needs to happen as well. We can't increase those penalties. This city council can't increase those penalties. So those are things that have to happen outside of here. Obviously, the State's Attorney has a role in the justice system. But I think our officers certainly share the frustration, as do I and the chief, because we see that the effort that they put in to, to respond to this.
Thank you. Roundtable. Counsel Dearing?
School starts tomorrow for our BUUSD kiddos. I am so excited. I've been like a month without kids in the school. It's very ghosty. So just drive safe tomorrow, be cautious, be patient. Really just give extra time. It's really important. I did put my ACL surgery off for two weeks, so I'll be going out for that on Friday. Based on some things at work, needed to wait. And also, I had a grandbaby last Wednesday, healthy baby girl. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're a grandpa.
I am a grandpa now.
Counselor Augustin?
Uh, pass.
Counselor Spalding?
Great. And thank you for giving me all of this time, you all, because I have three things I want to tell you about. I am the liaison to the Unhoused Community Committee, and I attended a lunch summit, and Counselor Augustin was there as well. Speaking of like different stakeholders in the room, it was a great experience, and I look forward to more of that. The JEDI B Committee has, is trying to encourage more people to be engaged with the JEDI B Committee. And for those people who are wondering what the JEDI B Committee is, it's Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And they're going to sort of host with the library a book club for the book Evicted, also by Matthew Desmond. He's the same guy that wrote the book Poverty by America. And that will be on September 25th. So I would encourage you to go to the library and check the book out. I think the, Kristen Baumann has gotten lots of books in for interlibrary loan so that different people can go and borrow them and participate in that. Even if you don't have a chance to read it, come and join the conversation. And the last thing I will say is I am a new board member for the Vermont Granite Museum, and I just want to remind people that the festival is coming up on the 20th of September. Put it on your calendars and show up. We would appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thank you. I think you're good within executive session. Then a motion to adjourn would be in order. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks, folks. Safe travels. Counselor Augustin?
Thank you.